Your attention, our elected officials and the rest of our staff also that this coming week is National Friends of the Library Week, October 21st through the 27th, and we'll be doing a few fun things in our library during this week. So we would love to have you join us and also wear proudly this Library BFF button, and we appreciate very much your support. We are going to have a gift basket for a drawing that will be filled with some books by our local authors, like this one. This is the story of ghost stories, real true ghost stories in our old buildings in Salt Lake City by a local woman here. And our librarian from Salt Lake that BYU had to play last week. And this book is an excellent story about his life and how the library helped him to overcome Tourette's Syndrome. But he, one of the things that he said, this is Josh Hannah Garn about the library because he did go on after he took 10 years to get his bachelor's degree, he went on and got a master's in library science and works at the library in Salt Lake City now. But he said, "A good library's existence is a potential step forward for a community. If hate and fear have ignorance at their core, maybe the library can curb their effects if only by offering ideas and neutrality. It's a safe place to explore, to meet with other minds, to touch other centuries, religions, races, and learn what you truly think about the world." So we're celebrating being the Friends of the Library this coming week. Thank you for joining us. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you, Claudia. Did Claudia mention her name? That's Claudia Stillman.
Yes, I'm Claudia Stillman, and I'm a member of the Friends of the Library. Thanks.
Any other, anyone else want to say anything? We have one more.
My name's Juliana Kilpak, 5962 West, 10-800 North. It was suggested to me that tonight would be a good time for me to come and kind of update you on the status of the seven houses hit by the sewer. So I just want to kind of share that with you and also give a good picture of what our lives have been like over the last few weeks so that as you continue, as a city continues to work with road construction contractors as well as their insurance companies, you've got knowledge from me what our lives have been like so you can put that emotion with it. So I'll try and talk about our neighbors generally, but probably more specifically me because it's my house. As you recall, we were hit with the city sewage that came up. We had anywhere from two to six inches of sewage throughout our entire basement, wall to wall, corner to corner. The tub was full, the toilet was like a geyser, it was just everywhere. It pushed the bathroom door shut and was just spilling out halfway up the vanity. It was a huge mess. I think it's the most frantic I have ever felt, and we were in the San Francisco earthquake. And this definitely topped that. The smell went clear out to the street. We lost, I think, the most furniture of all of our neighbors, which was most of it because it was wood and fabric, which of course absorbs very quickly. All of our furniture is still in the backyard. We have the fourth adjuster, and I'm thinking this is the final one come today. But we're anxious to get rid of that. Some of the neighbors have some of theirs out there still too, and there's, of course, bags of sewage soaked fabrics and things that are in the pile. Our garage is still full of clean stuff and stuff that can be cleaned and salvaged, as well as the neighbors, several of them are in the same situation. We've got boxes all over the upstairs as we've been trying to gather everything that was brought upstairs, combine it into the upstairs, find new places for those things. It's been kind of a challenge. We were actually out of our house for two and a half weeks. We got in, back in last Saturday night about 3:00 AM. I finished cleaning to the point where we felt comfortable walking around the house and not like we were going to further contaminate. We thankfully had a neighbor that we stayed with for four or five nights, and then we were fortunate, my sisters-in-laws that lived just around the corner from us have been out of town. So we've been able to take over their house, which has been very convenient. The first two or three days, I was walking around with my rubber waiter boots on all the time and a mask because the smell was so bad and the dehumidifiers were going. The first week and a half, we were consumed with moving stuff out of the house with the house full of workers, meetings and communications with neighbors and with the city and with the first adjuster, and trying to keep our house and the area as clean as possible. I finally took time to pay my own bills about 10 days after this happened. It just totally went to the top of the priority list. None of us neighbors were sleeping very well. In fact, one night we realized we were all up at 3:30 AM. We might as well have been doing our communication then because we were all awake. We lost some very expensive items besides our boiler and water heaters, carpet and walls. I personally lost two sewing machines. My daughter lost a pottery wheel. We lost some nice furniture that we'd gotten from my mother-in-law, as well as some other oak furniture and shelving. Other neighbors lost similar things. My dau, one of my daughters was downstairs. She's a high school senior, and she lost almost all of her shoes and her makeup and her flat iron and a lot of her extracurricular clothing. For a teenage girl, that's a big deal. We had to buy another bunk bed. We've, it's the fourth bunk bed set we'd had to buy. I thought we were done with those, but bringing a daughter upstairs, we had to cram a high school senior in with a freshman college student. They're not super happy about that. Thankfully, one is at Utah State for most of the week. How is this impacting our daily life? We've spent lots of time with multiple people in our home. I've probably had over 100 people in my house over the last three weeks, and that's not including the ones that have come multiple times cleaning. Complete restoration employees, contractors, plumbers, adjusters, which we're at four now, and a lot of helpers and visitors. Spent a lot of hours on photographing, labeling, finding comparable prices, and deciding if something is salvageable or not. Trying to keep dirty shoes off of clean surfaces has been a real challenge. They came in and laid plastic all over our wood, but you know, you've got rooms that are attached and trying to remind kids to drop shoes here and then step in has been a real, well, we kind of gave up. My husband lost three days of work. I know others that lost some days of work as well. Spent a lot of time searching for personal items. Things get brought up in a hurry and you don't know where they got put. Keeping kids out of contaminated areas. Couple of people have pets. Keeping their pets out has been a challenge too. Trying to work while you're in a chaotic home environment has been a real challenge. Daily life has been consumed with these workers, plastic on the floor, you know, gets in the way of doors opening and it's noisy. The fans and dehumidifiers are very noisy. Lot of times spent, like I said, searching for things, making phone calls, keeping appointments with contractors, comparing figures on bids, working on the list of personal property losses, trying to find new places for all the stuff that came from downstairs and in the process, de-junking too because you've got to make room for it. Sharing charging cords, that's been a funny challenge. We lost a lot of cords in the water and everybody's got things that need to be charged. Laundry, my laundry closet is in the hallway, and every time I open the laundry closet doors, the plastic is in the way. Ironing, I lost my iron and my ironing board, and so I've got now a huge pile of ironing to attack at some point. I lost my exercise stepboard, as well as my place to exercise. Funny things you wouldn't think about how it impacts your life, but it does. We've lost our family room, so watching general conference wasn't quite what we had planned this year. Eating and cooking was a real challenge. With the fans blowing who knows what around, thankfully, we had a lot of neighbors and friends that bought, brought us food that first week. I think I ate, well, more meals than I've ever eaten in my garage or standing out on the back porch. Concerns, we're all still concerned about our tainted homes. If any of us at some point, I don't think anybody is right now, but if at some point somebody needs to resell, how is that going to affect our homes? I know we've got a list of what's been done, but there are people even now that have different tolerances for this kind of thing. Some people are like, "Yeah, I want to come in and see and tell me the whole story." And other people are, have come and brought food, but they don't want to cross paths the sidewalk. So kind of a concern. Food storage cans. I lost a lot of food storage cans in the mess, and we've cleaned them, but there's still differing opinions on if those home-stored cans are, can we really open it up and eat it? Or is there a chance that some of it has leaked through the sealers on the cans? Health issues, hepatitis A, B, C, giardia, cryptovirus, and E. coli. They said, the health department told me after 30 days, we should be comfortable that we haven't gotten it. Symptoms would show up by then. So we've got another week and a half or so to know if anybody has been affected by something like that. The stress of all this, for some, it has really exacerbated anxiety. There's been a lot of sleeplessness around the neighborhood. Other issues have been worsened, or already existing health issues have been worsened. Anxiety, rheumatoid arthritis, sinusitis, diabetes. My little 12-year-old has become, he's back there, kind of clingy. He doesn't want to go to Clear Creek this year with the sixth graders. And I think part of it is due to how unsettled and fearful he was when he came, when he came, he didn't know what was going on when he came home from school that day and he saw all these white trucks. First, he thought we were moving. And then he thought when the guys in the white hazmat suits came out and were carrying big black bags, he thought there was something, you know, poisonous disease. Well, and there kind of was, but he, you know, thought there was something really deadly inside of our house that he was going to be affected by, and he wanted to run. But he says, "Mom, my legs are too rubbery. I couldn't move. My husband just watched the color drain out of his face as," and then it came back. But, you know, stressful on a kid. Other concerns, loss of stuff and other losses. My grandkids are here from Texas this week, and we don't have a place to put them. Normally, they sleep half the time at my house and half the time at the in-laws, or their other in-laws that live around the corner, but we don't have a safe place to put them. Carpet's been all ripped off the floorboards of the stairs, and there's the tack, you know, the metal tacks, things like that. So fortunately, we've got another home we can take them to, but it's not quite the same. We're still worried about replacement value versus depreciated cost. The adjuster that I saw today was very positive about, she says, "I don't like to work with depreciation." She says, "I do as little as possible." So she says, "We'll send it in and see what, see what they do." So I'm hopeful on that, but we still don't know, which leaves everybody a little unsettled. So will we have enough money at the end of this to replace things? Like for me, I've got three bedrooms upstairs as well as a living room area. I did my best to keep everybody off it, but after three weeks, you know there's contamination up there. So I'm going to want to replace those too, and I'm hoping that we get enough, close enough to replacement value that we will be able to cover those things as well so that we can get back into our home and feel like it's, like it really is clean. I want to express too how really grateful we are to the city. I feel like we've had a lot of advocates, that the city has really been an ally and done a lot to really help us in this situation. I have no complaints there. Would we have liked it to move a little quicker? Yes. But is there a process to follow? Yes. And I know there were issues with it, but I'm pleased at where it's, where it's going and hopeful by sharing these things that you will keep our lives in mind when you talk further with those that are in power to distribute money and encourage them to be as generous and as close to replacement value as they possibly can. Any questions?
Thank you so much for sharing this. This is enlightening and painful to listen to.
It's been a painful experience and enlightening for me as well.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for Mr. TSSD.
Thank you. My name is Richard Mickelson. I'm the new district manager for Tempanogus Special Service District. So the citizen that was just up here, she, I deal with her troubles every day, and so we deeply sympathize for her just knowing that she's had to deal with it. So I just wanted to start off here, and I didn't mean to be insensitive because this is what she's had to deal with every day for the last month or so, it sounds like. So this is raw wastewater coming into our facility right here. This is after we treat it, what it looks like. We remove 98% of the waste from the system, and the water ends up being clean. It takes about 18 hours for it to go through. Biology-wise, it takes though about 20 days for the water to get cleaned through the solids. So this right here is the solids that end up coming out. We produce about 30,000 tons a year of solids. That is about 300 pounds for each one of the residents in this, in the district. And then we actually process it and turn it into some compost right here, and then that comes back to, people put it on their flower gardens or whatever else. That's a process that we've been able to enjoy for quite some time now. We've had to settle a lawsuit because they found out that our poop stinks, and so they don't want it anymore down there. So we can't do this system anymore, which means for you that you're not going to be able to bring your green waste down to the facility anymore because we won't be able to mix them and treat it and make a process for us. Also, I wanted to let you know that, well, you are one of 10 member cities that produce waste that comes to us, and we processed last month 18, over 18 million gallons a day. The facility's rated for 30 million gallons. I wanted you to turn to your packets for just a moment to look and see kind of how we are doing financially compared to some of the other cities across the nation. That's this front page right here. Just look at that. This is by a national, NACWA system, that's a national entity that they do surveys for the national. If you look right there at the top, it shows personnel costs. Other facilities throughout the country spend about 45% of their dollars on personnel costs. TSSD does about 27%. You can see the operation and maintenance cost per million gallons is about $2,500, and we are at about $2,300. Turn over and you can see some of the other costs, like chemical costs and electrical costs, and you can see that TSSD is doing a good job in there doing that as well. Wanted to, also, the state of Utah is in charge of setting the regulations which we need to comply by. And let you know that your facility has had no violations, and we meet all of the requirements, regulations that are set forth by the state. Recently, they have adopted a new rule, that's the 2020 rule that it's become known as. It's the phosphorus rule. So this water contains a little bit of phosphorus, and as you know, phosphorus is lifeblood. It moves us, that's how we're actually able to move, is from the ATP in our cells. So phosphorus is not waste, I mean, it's not, it's a nutrient. It's not a toxic chemical. It's needed for life to proceed forth. Hence, you'll see probably Utah Lake where you've heard a lot of the algae growth. That's what the next page is, alternative stable states. I wanted to point that out. You see on the left-hand side, that's clean water body, less than 25 parts per billion phosphorus. As more life comes into the system, you get that top section right there, which talks about 25 parts per billion to 100 parts per billion. More life is starting to create and be around. And then over on the right-hand side, you can see kind of what I like to call pea soup. That's greater than 100 parts per billion of phosphorus, where you have excess nutrients in the water. So one of the theories, this chart was created by an engineering firm that spends their life, livelihood recovering these water bodies back to more of a clear water body. So they show you there on the bottom, they've been able to reduce the phosphorus and remove it out of the system and get it back to the 25 parts per billion to 100 parts per billion, but you still didn't get the clear water body back. That's because you have to have the ecology to make that work. So you can see that line, that arrow that points it back up to the ecology. So why is this important to you? Because Utah Lake is being studied right now by the state of Utah and the DWQ. They're spending, they, the Water Quality Board has allocated a million dollars to study the lake, and the legislature last year allocated $500,000. And we also produce, put some money into the system at about $100,000 a year to help study the lake. So what's going to happen with that? They're basically trying to figure out where was Utah Lake? Where's, where is it at right now? And where is it going? And so after they finish their studies, they will in 2023 determine what kind of requirements are going to be added upon our facility and what we're going to have to do to comply to that. And so that's what's going on there. I wanted to turn to the last page right there. You can see, here's some of these studies that people have done. In Lake Wingra in Wis, Wisconsin, you can see that they have a carp exposure. I don't know if you've heard a lot of carp issues with Utah Lake. Carp go down and eat all the vegetation, and so it makes it the ecology disappear. So you can see from there, the lake has got a lot of algae, and then they created a place where the carp can't get in there and eat it. And here's another picture right there of Riley Lake, Minnesota, where they actually did the same thing more close up, where you can see clear water in there, but there's a lot of sub-aquatic vegetation that's growing up in there. Those are some of the things that they will be studying in this Utah Lake study. So in short, the research that is being done on Utah Lake, DWQ established new parameters for TS potentially for us that we'll need to comply with. So with that, any questions?
Couple, couple points of clarification. Rich mentioned that you can't take your green waste down there because we're going to end that process. That's not happening this year.
2021.
Exactly. So this year and next year, you can still take your green waste down there. You can still pick up compost.
Yes.
From there.
And where is there?
There is the treatment plant down in. If you take the Pleasant Grove exit off of the freeway, head west, you will pass the plant. It will be on your left after you cross the railroad tracks. So you can take your green waste for free if you're a resident of Highland or any of the cities that participate in the, in the waste treatment facility there. And for $20, you can pick up a cubic yard of compost, which is extremely inexpensive and grows great pumpkins and squash and corn and all sorts of things in my yard. Couple other things, just, just real quick. One of the reasons we brought up this phosphorus thing is, right now, based upon what the state is, is asking or implying that needs to be done, some of the water that comes down from the canyon without any treatment or any impact actually has more phosphorus than what our treated water from the facility is expected to produce. So the natural phosphorus in this area is actually higher than what they're asking us. So we're actually taking phosphorus out and putting into a lake that the natural causes are actually putting more in. So the snowpack up on top of the mountain has more phosphorus than what they're asking us to deliver into the lake, which is a little ridiculous, and it will cost hundreds of millions of dollars to fix it. And all of us in this room who live in northern Utah County are going to pay the bill for something that will have absolutely zero impact and value. And that's where we should all be talking to our legislators and say, if you can prove that there's a benefit, then let's do it. But don't impose certain restrictions when it has absolutely no value and it's going to cost us a boatload of money and have no value. So no one at the facility is saying, "Don't do it if it's got some value, but show it." And they haven't been able to show it. We've got lots of research that shows just the opposite, and that's where we're pushing back. But everybody here should be pushing very hard not to have your bills go up for no reason at all. Literally hundreds of millions of dollars are going to go into this.
That is correct. So there's, like I mentioned to start off, we're at 98% removal. We're looking at trying to squeeze the last 2% out of there. And the cleaner and cleaner you get it, the more it ends up being water that's drinkable or usable for water reuse or other purposes. So the state is, Governor Herbert has said that we need to, we're in a drought, and people want the water from Utah Lake. And so this water's water. We need it everywhere, so.
I have a question. So you're not going to be accepting green waste after a year or so. Where do you anticipate that will go? Will that go to North Point?
Yes.
Transfer station?
That's one place it can go, yes.
Uh-huh. That's, they're anticipating, and I'm on the board down there, and they assume all that green waste will be coming there and be transferred.
Roger actually came to visit with us this last week, may have been a week ago, but he's trying to get a handle on how much mass he's going to have to deal with. And we currently at Tempanogus Special Service District, we grind that, mix it, win with our bio solids, and then treat it more so that it can be reused back to the public. I think it was $200,000 in revenue that we got last year from selling the compost back to the public, and it's reusable and sustainable, but that's going to be going away, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich, for coming.
Next on our agenda is UDOT. We have Courtney Bouvet and Craig Hancock here to talk to us about what's happening in the area.
Yes, well, thank you guys for having us. We were here back in, I believe, March of this year to kind of give you an update before construction started. So as you guys know, construction is well underway at this point. They're moving really quickly, so we just kind of want to give you a project update and kind of let you know about some big changes happening in early November, as well as an I-15 closure that is happening tomorrow night and Thursday night. So, you want to go to the next slide or? So just high-level project update at this time. So as you guys, I'm sure you've been driving it pretty frequently, crews have been shifting traffic around to help reconstruct the roadway on I-15. One thing they're really focusing on this year is the bridge at Triumph Boulevard. So the other big bridge that they're focusing on right now is the 600 East Bridge down in Lehigh that kind of connects the southern part of Lehigh, right in between 2100 North and Lehigh Main. So the I-15 closure that we have been publicizing is to place the beams on that bridge deck. So the plan is, is southbound will, southbound I-15 from 2100 North to Lehigh Main Street will be closed tomorrow, tomorrow night from 11:00 PM to 4:00 AM the following morning, Thursday morning. And then the opposite will happen, northbound I-15 from Lehigh Main Street to 2100 North will close Thursday night into Friday morning, same time, 11:00 PM to 4:00 AM. So that is a big closure that's coming up. We had another full freeway closure back in June to demo that bridge. Went fairly smoothly as far as traffic goes for a freeway closure. So the word got out and the public knew to kind of avoid the area if they could. So this time, it's just directional and it's a shorter timeframe. So we're hoping for much of the same, but if you guys plan any travels, try to avoid I-15 at that time. So this slide's perfect. So we kind of really want to hit on some of the stuff happening in early November. I'll plan to kind of give a high overview of kind of phasing that's going to happen, and then our next couple of slides will kind of be close-ups of those things. So bear with me as I kind of give you a lot of information, and then we'll kind of go into detail to address some of your questions. So like I said, Triumph Boulevard Bridge is the big focus this year. UDOT and the contractors kind of incentivized opening that bridge to traffic before they start reconstructing 2100 North and the SR92 interchange. So that bridge is on schedule to open in early November. Right now, they're targeting November 1st. That is subject to change for weather. If we have another week of rain, that could be pushed, but they are on schedule to open it. It will open in an interim configuration, so I'll show you in a little bit what that kind of looks like. At that time when the bridge opens, the west-side frontage road, so by Thanksgiving Point, the movie theater, that will be converted to southbound. Point, the movie theater, that will be converted to southbound only traffic. So that is part of the final design. When it's switched to southbound only, it will be in an interim configuration. They'll still be working in the area, but at that point it will be one-way only. The east side by the hospital, Mountain Point Medical Center, was converted to northbound only last week and that was to kind of help address some of the flagging concerns over there. We were trying to get two-way traffic through really a one-way section with all the work happening. So that has been converted and it has gone fairly smoothly at this time. So both of those will all be in place November 1st. Following that, work's going to start on 2100 North pretty quickly. So they will have a full weekend closure where 2100 North crosses I-15 right below there. It'll be closed from a Friday night to a Monday morning. Right now they're targeting November 9th, but that could change if the weather kind of slips the opening of the bridge. So it'll close just under the freeway. Ramps to I-15 and off I-15 will remain accessible for that full weekend. So it will just be for east-west traffic. And what they're going to do is lower the profile of the roadway so they can start reconstructing the bridge above I-15. When it opens that Monday morning, so November 12th, 2100 North will be in a temporary traffic configuration, a diverging diamond interchange similar to what you see at 92. We're trying to make it very clear that this is a temporary configuration. It's not part of the final design, but they need to get 2100 North down to one lane in each direction under the bridge so that they can reconstruct that interchange right there. The DDI, the diverging diamond, will help move traffic as efficiently as it can with that down to one lane. So that's why that's happening. The other piece of that is there will be a new temporary loop ramp to access southbound I-15. So the existing one will close to traffic and this new one, if you drive by there now, you'll actually kind of see them constructing it. They're kind of putting the dirt up there. It will be in the northwest quadrant of that current interchange. Also at that time, we will open up an additional access to northbound I-15 at Triumph Boulevard. It is a temporary configuration, but there will be a loop ramp from Triumph Boulevard to get to northbound I-15 without having to go down to 2100 North or go through 92. So that will open. So if you want to click to the next slide. I got it. So this, this shows a closeup of what Triumph will look like when it opens to traffic. So like I said, this is an interim configuration. The big thing to know is there will be one through lane for east-west travel. There will also be turn lanes to go onto either frontage road or to get onto that loop ramp that I mentioned to northbound I-15. At this time, it will be controlled by stop signs in all directions, so three-way stop sign. Closer, as construction continues, crews are working to get a signal up on either end. It just won't be ready for when the bridge opens. One other thing just to know is Lehigh City is widening Triumph Boulevard on either side of that bridge. They have committed to us to keep traffic open to one lane in each direction as much as possible so that whatever we have open on our bridge, they'll have on the other side. So their, their work is mainly in the outside. We don't really foresee that impacting traffic and having people go through this bridge and then kind of being stuck in additional construction. That's the bridge. Does anyone have any questions on the closeup of Triumph when it opens? We'll get to the DDI as well at 2100 North, but any questions kind of on this?
So you're going to push the flow, a normal flow that goes to 2100, you're going to start pushing it through here? Because this will be open and try to lessen everything through 2100? Is that the intent?
Yeah, that's kind of the thought. It will give people another option to avoid 2100 when it's under construction and SR92. So it won't be, you know, to full capacity. When it is opened in 2020, it will be a five-lane bridge, so two through lanes with center turn lanes. So it won't be able to handle as much, but yes, that's kind of the thought. They wanted to open this bridge up and then they're allowing crews to then tackle 2100 North.
Will it have both lanes going both ways by November 1st then, when you open it up?
No.
Lehigh won't be ready. It'll just be one lane?
Well, we, we also won't be ready as far as that. So when it opens November 1st, it'll just be one through lane in each direction with turn lanes. But when it opens in 2020, it'll be those two through lanes, so.
Let me ask a question. So it seems like you're diverting more traffic up, because Triumph Boulevard goes to SR92, right?
Yep.
So what's the anticipation? I mean, that intersection of SR92 and the freeway, I know you're rebuilding that, but it seems like you're just going to make it worse for quite a while because you're going to put even more traffic on that end of SR92.
Well, the thought would be, and Craig can correct me if I'm wrong, when it opens, you'll see more of that Thanksgiving Point traffic heading east. They'll take Triumph to 92 and continue east. They wouldn't come back around to SR92. Likewise, residents in Highland could take Triumph to go west versus continuing through 92.
Well, it'll be interesting to see what happens.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you guys have seen traffic numbers that would.
The biggest issue, I, I drive this every day. The biggest issue is there's only one entrance into the park. Everybody funnels into it on SR92. If you're coming from Saw Lake or you're on the north end, this will allow anybody who is in a business on the south end to get onto Triumph. They don't have to go through SR92 through that intersection.
That's true.
And you can get into the business park where you really need to go instead of funneling through that and then having to drive through the park all the way to the south end.
Correct.
So it's, you know, it's about half the population that drives through that exit that will be able to off, offload into this.
Yeah. And that's, that's kind of the thought. It will divert, it may provide an easier access to 92, like you said, but it will divert additional traffic off of 92. So it is a temporary configuration. Once it's all complete, it will give people multiple options. There will also be additional access on and off I-15, which will pull people off. That won't be opening in early November, but there will be phases throughout the project that will, will make traffic flow a little bit better. So some relief coming before 2020, but, but it won't be, it won't be final until 2020. So if you want to go to the next slide, I'll show you that one. So this is kind of a closeup of the 2100 North temporary configuration. So like I said, one thing we're really stressing as a communications team is we want to make it clear to residents, the public, this is not a final design. We know people are going to see the crossing traffic, the diverging diamond, and it's going to scare them and they hate those, especially at 92. So this is just a temporary configuration for construction so they can reconstruct the interchange. So as you can see, the biggest thing for us as a communications standpoint is letting people know about the new southbound I-15 access. So that is very different. It's going to hopefully not catch people off guard, but they will need to kind of stay alert for that first little bit when the changes happen. There will be a lot of signage in place, flashing those VMS portable signs to kind of grab their attention. Highland residents should, if they're coming from the east headed west, they'll kind of be forced into that southbound ramp if that's where they're trying to go. We are working closely with Saratoga Springs and Eagle Mountain residents because if they're headed from the west and going east and they miss that southbound I-15 ramp, they're going to have to go through the DDI and turn back around. So that could cause them some delays, so. In our point of view, they'll probably make the mistake once and they won't do it again, but we don't want them to make the mistake the first time. So, so we're working heavily on that, but you could see that call-out box. The biggest piece of that is it will be down to one lane under the bridge. And last I heard when we kind of ran traffic numbers, we don't anticipate it after people get used to it to be much worse than it already is during the peak times, but there will be some getting used to. So this will come in place about a week, week and a half after Triumph Bridge opens. So really by mid-November, all these big traffic changes should be in place. We're hoping kind of another week, week and a half for everyone to kind of get used to it, try a different couple of routes, see what works best for them during their commutes and it will hopefully settle down by the end of November. But it will be a busy November for construction and to get things going. Any questions on this 2100 North piece? None of there? Okay. Well, all I want to include on here is, so I work on the communications team. We're doing a lot of outreach. We're meeting with a lot of our large stakeholders that have 500-plus employees in the area, meeting with them again, coming to city council. So we have a lot of outreach tools we're, we're going to be using to kind of get this stuff out. So I'll share it with your team. I know we have a meeting with Highland staff as well. I believe it's Thursday, actually, so we'll kind of be going through these, but keep an eye out for us. Please let your friends know, let your residents know. There will be changes coming. We just want people to be aware and drive the speed limit, 60 miles per hour, and to drive slow and just stay alert during construction because it, it is changing and crews are moving quick, so. Just asking people to kind of pay attention to the project at this time. Any questions on that? We do have Craig here. I know last time we came in March, you guys had a lot of questions on the design. If you have any questions on that, he can definitely help answer any of those for you if they haven't been answered since that first meeting, but. Well, that's easy.
Very good.
Okay, well, thank you guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You've done a really good job on the social media side.
Oh, thank you.
From the Twitter to the emails to the face, your, your websites and other stuff. Huge difference for me to be able to see those kinds of things because you get it out there pretty prompt most of the time. And so it's greatly appreciated being used at least by one person.
No, that's great to hear. We'll pass that along to the rest of our team. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next item is item three, consent items, approval of meeting minutes and ratifying Highland Historical Society appointments. Anybody want to pull anything?
I'll move we accept the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. For the council, we are not electronic voting tonight. We still haven't got that sorted out yet, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Item four, I believe there was a discussion that we would continue that.
Correct. This is being continued. Council member Dennis.
Mayor, I visited with the Tanners and they would like to continue it to November 13th pending a proposal that's being put together by the neighborhood.
Any discussion on that? What a move that.
One concern that I did notice when I made a visit to the site, it appears that there'd been several notices of parking vehicles there in the easement or in the city property and there still appears to be a violation there of vehicles being parked on this property. This is a concern.
I, I'm not aware of the status of the vehicles. I'll make sure that they're aware that they need to be moved. But I would make a motion that we continue this item to the November 13th meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was also unanimous. All right, but let's hope the rest of the items go this fast. Okay, we have an item five, formation of the Mountain Ridge Park Board. Let me take that item. Can you put up the, the next slide? So we're proposing that this would be an ad hoc committee be formed. It's a seven-member board with duties that include developing and submitting accounts for approval, amenities to be included in the park, use policies and associated fees for amenities, naming rights and policies for fundraising. There was a recommendation from the, that, the pickleball group that they, as far as the associated fees for amenities, that we, we specify that if someone were to offer $500,000 or more to the, to the creation of the park, that they be allowed to name the park. That, that can be part of the discussion when we have that. And then the other objective of the committee will be to identify options for managing the park/pickleball facility following construction. I would offer time at this point for anybody from the committee that's here. I don't know who that would be to, to come up and make whatever statements they would like to make. I'll preface, I know you left a packet for people, so if you want to share what information you have, one of that would be great. So the second motion will be with respect to funding, but that will be a separate discussion. So this, this, but if you want to preface either of those with comments.
Okay, my name's Lauren Reed and I think this, this all looks fine. That.
Okay, you're, you're fine with that.
Yeah.
And the stuff that you left with us, this is a concept designed for the park.
Right.
It's current.
Right.
It's not final, it's just a concept, but we've, she's worked with Todd on some of this, so this is a, a concept. And then I also handed you the two documents that were in that, there to have copies of, of these except for the cost items on the park. And that's more germane to the next element discussion, so. Mayor, do we have the seven members identified? We do not. We, I would recommend that, I've seen some names floated around. We didn't have their names to put on the agenda. If we need that, those committee members there, I, once we get them, we don't have seven identified. Here's, here's what I tend to be put in my mind, since Ed's going to be involved in the, the market technical committee, that Brian be the council rep on that. And I've talked to Larry Mendenhall already because he's somebody that's had a lot of experience with planning commission and staff and he's agreed if we want him to participate in that. And then I would think a couple of members of the, of the pickleball committee, two or three, and then you've given some other names that I think are worth, I haven't talked to them. So if we come up with a list, and I'll share them with you beforehand, between, our next meeting is the 13th, which would be kind of a long time. If we can agree via email that this is a good list, we can ask for a consent item-only council meeting. We just need three people there to vote yes for five minutes and just have a five-minute meeting.
On board members?
Just on board members.
There's four, there's four people on the pickleball committee and they would, they would all need to be on that.
Would they? All of them? Okay. So then we need one other person, which we already have, and then Brian, and that's, that's six and seven. So we need a couple of other, two other people plus Brian.
Well, I'm not opposed to the pickleball people.
There's seven?
Four, and that's quite a few on the committee because there are other interests in this park.
Okay.
I'm wondering if we ought to have maybe three from pickleball and at least four from other people in the city.
So Mayor, one question I have is, you know, we're forming this committee. We've not yet had any residents input or open house for the residents. Is the thought that this committee would, would do that open house or we could have an open house before to help this committee? What kind of, share maybe the big.
The intention on this committee is to get community engaged in this, to have a variety of people on that that represent different constituencies. So not just pickleball, but other people because it's, it's, we're talking about the park as a whole. And then.
So is the responsibility of this committee to do a neighborhood meetings or to that? Or is it, is it the city council to hear input and the, the committee to hear? I mean, I'm just trying to see how you're trying to.
There's, there's a, there is, we looked into it, there, we're going to have to hold, we're going to have to have a, what was it? We have to have a public meeting to, to get the park approved because it needs a conditional use permit, whether we build it or somebody else builds it, which requires a planning commission meeting with notice and then the planning commission has to review and then we have to, as a council, approve. Now that can be done concurrent with design, so that's not a, that's not a critical path item per se, as long as we do it in the next couple of months. But the committee is certainly involved in, in outreach to the community and looking for input from different sources as to what would work with respect to the park. We probably also going to need their input if we look at phasing the park, for example, saying, okay, we're just going to do a skeleton park, grass, parking lot and pickleball courts, no pavilion, plum for lights, but no lights. So that would be a minimal cost point of view. And, and we would work with our staff in the committee to determine what that would be and then we have maximum flexibility going forward. So I just want to get the authorization to have that committee because that's what the council's supposed to do and then we can continue to refine what they want. Let me just ask, Lauren, do we really need the four?
Right. And let me explain to you who those are. So it would be me and it would be Brad Pace and Chris Stackery. They, they both have integral parts in, in, in fundraising and making it happen.
Just so you know, we, we have committees, but committees can create subcommittees without the involvement of the city. So if you want to have other people involved in the project. So, if you want to have other people involved in the process, you can have a committee and then you can have a fundraising committee that concludes a formal committee member plus however many other people you want to involve that doesn't have to be approved by us.
Okay.
So, if you want, they're.
So, the fourth person would be Ray, who represents not a pickleball faction. He's okay with it.
You're talking about Ray Ellison?
Right.
Okay.
So.
So, from a clarity standpoint, everybody in this room right now could be at that committee meeting.
They're public meetings.
So, it's not an issue of whether they can be involved or not. It's really an issue of, you have to designate certain people that vote and move it forward. But the discussion, the action items, all of those kinds of things, anybody that wants to be involved can have input.
So, then, then I guess I need to ask you. Does the formation of this committee make it move faster or slower?
I think it makes it move faster.
It has to make it move faster or we don't want the committee.
Right, right.
So, my only concern is, and you know, I support the pickleball option tremendously, but I do think we need to be careful and get input from other people in the area that are impacted. And then other people that are interested in other amenities like, you know, soccer field or baseball field. Or, you know, you have the disability playground or whatever. But we just need a few other people to get some input there, and I think if you have a little bit of the neighborhood involved, it helps. Because a lot of them will consider this to be a neighborhood park as well as a city park. So, I don't think that will slow things down, but I think you need, for the other amenities besides pickleball, you need somebody else kind of, you know.
I would support that.
Appreciate that.
So, I would, my personal, this is Rod Man's opinion, it's worth what you paid for it. I would think two or maybe three, but that gives, but they can be involved. You're not excluding anybody, you're just saying two voting members or three voting members are part of this from your group.
I think it'd be good to have Ray because.
The decision of who those individuals are don't have to be defined in this meeting.
Yes.
And their engagement and their involvement is not going to be minimized by them being on the committee or not on the committee. They can be fully engaged, they can give all their input and everything else. It comes down to when a decision is made, those seven people vote on whatever the decision is. But the formation of the decision, the people are involved in and everything else can be anybody and everybody. And so, it doesn't exclude anybody from being engaged in this whole process and having responsibilities and reporting back to the committee and doing their things. It just means that the very, there has to be a clear defined vote and there are seven people that are going to make that vote. But once, everything leading up to it and everything executed after it can be with as many people as we feel is necessary.
Okay, so then if it can only be three, I'll take myself out of it and it'll be Brad Pace, Chris Stackery and Ray.
Well, I think the mayor can decide that. We don't have to decide who's on the committee.
I'll talk with you over the next couple of days and.
And you can decide whatever the best, the best individuals are, and it can also change. You know, if it doesn't make sense, you want to change it.
People can come on and off the committees, it's not casting concrete, but the seven would be.
We just need more representation from other people in the city too.
We do.
Yeah.
This is, this is a city park, not a pickleball park.
Right, and I'm part of the city, so I am interested in the entire park, I promise.
And that's, and that's what we want, is to make sure that people who look at it recognize that it's being represented by all parts.
Okay.
Pickleball has a big important part to it. They should have a few more people.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to move that the city council approve the formation of the Mountain Ridge Park Board.
Second. As outlined.
As outlined in the overview, seven-member board.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, done. Okay, next item. You can go ahead and sit down while we may ask you to, feel free to come up again. Next item is the funding. And I wanted, I talked with Todd today and Nathan, and I'm just going to ask Todd, before we start on the funding, you can go ahead and go to the next slide, Todd, to kind of walk through, what's the process from today forward to actually build a park? And just kind of walk through what those steps are, what has to get done, and then we can talk about different ways of doing that and funding it.
So, the, Mayor, appreciate the time.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Todd's son today, his 10-year-old son had an emergency appendectomy. Todd's son today, so it was outpatient, I mean, he had an emergency X, so we appreciate Todd being here and spending time with us.
Sure.
Was that today?
Yes. Today.
We keep interrupting your whole life. If it's not basketball, it's your surgery.
Let's just say that I haven't slept since the night before last, so if I say something really dumb, let's blame it on that, so.
We are recording it.
Take it as it's normal.
We've got video and audio of it, so.
So, if we start design today, you know, the process to get a consultant through the, through the city, if this becomes a city project and it's on our property, it's, majority of it's going to be city funds, some of it's going to be through donation, but we have the ability to treat it like a development or take it in-house and do it as a city project. We still can have the same input regardless, depending on the agreement that we have. But if this stays as a city project, we have certain criteria that we have to follow as our solicitation process. So, what we've put here is kind of what the process would be. It would take us probably a month on an accelerated schedule to do an RFP, get proposals, to do the design. During that process, doing the park design, we have to follow our own processes. This would be a conditional use as we design the park, so we would follow that and go through that same process with planning commission, city council. Once that's done and we have a design complete, well, at least a consultant on board doing the design. I would estimate, and these are estimates, keep in mind, but just my experience in the past, I would think that a park of this size on an accelerated schedule, we need to plan for at least 90 to 120 days of full design. Now, does that mean that we have to wait that long to start construction? No, we could do this in a way that we phase it, maybe start the groundwork, do some of the utility work and groundwork ahead of time in an accelerated schedule, and then do the full design with 120 days. So, we're doing our best to come up with a process that would keep them moving if that's what the city council would like to do, move on this accelerated schedule. So, we can accommodate that through the city's processes, but.
So, you're saying if we go the city processes, we have this RFP process that we have to do. If we have the project funded and managed through the Highland Foundation, we could do it, they could do it differently. And we would have to have an agreement between, this is where we would have to, the city would have to have an agreement with the Highland Foundation of how we would work together on that.
Correct.
And that would need to be drafted by our attorney, and then we could, they could move forward with input from us along the way.
They already have a consultant on board that is working on, he is the one that provided the concept that's in front of you, Design West. So, they could continue with that same consultant if it stays with the Highland Foundation. But I would recommend that we have some sort of vehicle through the city, an agreement of some kind, that we would be involved. This is our park, this is, you know, the park for our residents, and that we would, we would want to be in form, you know, making informed decisions for the residents. So, it can stay with that process because they don't have to go through the same processes that we do as far as solicitation.
So, that takes two to five weeks out of the overall process.
Possibly, yes. It could save some time.
The problem, the only problem you have with that is anytime an organization pays most of the money and offloads it and then gets the whole project back, the first thing people believe is you're just trying to get around the rules. If they're putting most of the money in and they're managing it, then it's not going to have the same feel. So, there are some issues here about whether we could legally do that and somebody's going to push back on it. I don't know who would, but it could be some of the contractors that may want to bid on it. But if it's mostly our money going in to build it, we pay them to do it and then we get it right back. It looks just like all we did was try to shorten the length of the time just so that we could get around state law.
Isn't that what we're trying to do? I'm just going to be honest, I mean, that's what it sounds like you're trying to do here. You're going, hey, let's hurry up and take it to the foundation, we don't want the city to be involved, we don't, I've got to be honest, I don't know where the residents should be involved. This is their property, this is their tax money going in. Where's their input?
We didn't, so we've really moved this fast. I would say nobody in the audience unless they've had, you know, a crystal ball even knows what we're talking about because we've had lots of conversations. We have to go through all of that. We have to get the residents involved. We have to communicate this out to the residents. We have a lot of process. You asked the question before, should the committee do it or should the city? We just need to define who's going to do it. The city's responsible for it. If we delegate it to the committee, then they do it. If not, staff does it or a combination of the two. We just have to decide, but it has to happen. You're exactly right.
Let me ask some questions, Lorna. I know you're trying to expedite this and I support that. I support the pickleball, I think it'll be a great thing. But you're trying to get these courts, at least the courts built by late spring, early summer, so you can have a pickleball tournament. So, what's your timeframe?
It needs to be done by August.
It needs to be done by August. So, you know, in my discussions on some of this stuff, it seems to me like it should be done through the city. I think what you need is some sort of commitment from the city that we want to proceed with this and some sort of commitment on about how many funds we could maybe come from perhaps the surplus of some land or something. But to me, it just seems like the foundation can go out and raise donations, and we don't know how much that may be, but you need some sort of funds and commitment from the city. So, I think the city should be in charge of this project. This is a city park. I would like to see the foundation being kind of a fundraising wing for donations and stuff so that we can expedite it because we don't have, you know, millions of dollars to do all of this in our funds. So, am I misunderstanding what you were hoping? I would think you'd want the city to do this, then you're the fundraiser kind of expediting it, but the city's in charge, right?
Lorna, would you come up to the mic just so that it's?
Maybe explain, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
So, I have no opinion as to whether the city should do it or the foundation should do it. I think it should be done the right way, whatever the right way is, and I don't have that information. So, that's why you're here to decide. This is, but there is a critical path, and that is what, we're not trying to get around any rules. We're trying to hit a critical path. And the critical path is that the courts have to be done in mid-August for the fundraising plan to happen. So, it's nice to have a commitment, and if I had all the time in the world to give more than the almost year that I've already given, then that might, that might work really well. I mean, it could, it would be a more leisurely process for me as well. It would be more enjoyable by far. However, there are things that have a perfect storm that has happened in that we have a, the third largest tournament in the country has failed in Brigham City because there is no services in Brigham City. Yet here, we have services coming out of our ears.
Services meaning?
Of kind of services.
We have.
Hotels.
We have hotels, we have restaurants, and you're right, I know all of you thinking, oh, that's Lehigh.
Easy access from the airport.
That's not Lehigh, that's our community, and all boats rise on this tide. And if we have pickleball courts here, it helps Highland. If we have pickleball courts in Lehigh, it doesn't help Highland. So, if we have pickleball courts here, it helps Highland and Lehigh and Alpine and Cedar Hills and American Fork. In Lehigh, it just helps Lehigh. So, there are corporate sponsors galore in Lehigh that are willing to sponsor things like this. I've met with all of you, I've showed the kinds of things that can happen, and there are legion things that can, that can happen if you have the right kind of tournament. There is one of the right kind of tournament that is up for grabs as to where it will be. They want to have it here. They're Utah people, they want to have it here. They, they would love to have the, leave the tournament here. It's a better place for them to be. However, they have to know that we are building and they have to have a place to have the tournaments. That means it has to be done in 2019. It has to be done for, and they've even moved the date to a date that is feasible for us to happen. They've moved it to Labor Day.
So, for clarity, the reason why we're talking about this is that if we are able to meet some of these deadlines, then you are working toward getting additional funding that will help pay for this park, which will offset residents' cost to the park, and it becomes a win-win for everybody. So, the whole goal here is that as residents, we're going to get a really nice park.
And it's cash positive.
We're going to pay a lot less and it's going to be cash positive as long as, as long as pickleball is good.
As long as pickleball is good.
And as long as.
It will generate funds that you, the city council can use in whatever way it feels.
That's, that's why we're talking about expediting, that's why we're talking about all these things, is because there's a window of opportunity here that if we do things right, then we may be able to benefit from it. If we don't do it right, we may miss that window of opportunity and then the park.
Then it's a different project.
It's a different project than what we've been talking about, so.
So, I understand that, but I guess I don't understand the question here of whether the foundation does the project or the city. But it seems to me like it's a city project and the foundation goes out and raises charitable contributions because it's set up as a 501(c)(3). So, I'm not sure that the foundation wants to develop the park. I mean, you raise funds for it, but the city, you give them to the city, the city builds the park. I mean, I don't understand the question here.
It's a deadline, if we can meet a deadline for construction of the park, then all of these things that she's talking about will come to fruition.
Well, I totally understand it because I've talked with Lorna a lot.
If the construction can be done quicker so that we can meet that deadline, that would be the benefit. If going through the city forces us beyond and we miss that deadline because the city had to do it, then we miss the opportunity. That would be the reason for doing it from a timing standpoint. It's only because of that, if it could shorten it to where we could actually deliver on time the part, the pickleball courts, so that we could have the tournaments here.
So, yeah, so I understand that, but is there some question that the city can't get through the process, Todd?
Yes. That's my, that's my.
You're talking about a pretty fast build job. You know, if you're going, that you go out and you're Aprilish, which is what we have down here, and we're going still, and if construction is still the way it is right now, we don't have subs that are just hitting spot on every day.
Right.
We're going to struggle to be done in 90 days. I mean, that's what you're saying, is we're going to start Aprilish and we need to be done by the April, you know, August 1st. This tournament knows in 30 days, they're okay at the end of August to have it.
If we started pouring cement in April.
That's, but if it's rainy, I'm just saying you have weather delays, you have other things.
Four and a half months, so that's a pretty tight.
Scott, to answer your question, this is a very tight schedule.
Sure, and I understand that.
It's very tight. Can it be done? Yes, if it's done the right way. If you phase it and get contractors out there working ahead of time where you're designing, it's almost a design-build project, not a design-bid-build, if that makes sense. So, it's not the normal project that we would do.
Are we going to be okay getting bids though? I mean, when you're, I understand a company giving, hey, we're going to do design-build, we're just going to keep going. That's how they did Micron out here. Micron was they wanted to get it done as fast as they could, just start going. But we, we're not going to be able to get bids, we don't know our cost, and we could have some problem cost-wise, is that?
Correct. We, we as a city had a very hard time with our 6,000 West project recently with getting concrete contractors. We, we as a city had a very hard time with our 6,000 West project recently with getting concrete contractors. They're in very high demand right now and we could run into that and pay a premium to get flat work, concrete done. So, can it be done? We can work through it right now, you know? We will as staff do whatever the city council would like us to do. Right now, it's a very, very accelerated schedule, but we can make it work.
So, if you do, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, so, there are a couple of things that I have information on that may help, may help here. There are only two contractors in the state who do this kind of work, only two. So, and they both know that they're...
So you're talking pickleball, not parks, but pickleball?
Talking pickleball, which is the critical path. Pickleball is the critical path. So, there's only two contractors who do this. And they both know that, that this is coming up. They both know it, they both want it. So they both know, that is, that isn't it.
Just, just for clarity, there are lots of contractors that can do the cement for this. There are only two that meet the requirements of what we would want and need to make sure these pickleball courts are done properly. They've got the experience and they've met some certifications or approvals or whatever. So that's where the difference, I mean, anybody can, I can go out and do concrete work. It'd look crappy, but...
Right.
It's, it's because of what their experience is and what they can bring to the table that we're down to two.
And, and probably flat work contractor, uh, concrete people wouldn't even do it if they were reputable. So, I can tell you though, that we also have a connection with the flat work. So, that is something that serendipitously may just happen. So, I'm just saying.
So, let's get the, there's another elephant in the room. First phase, let's assume it costs $2.4 million. Where's the money coming from? I mean, let's, let's kind of get down, it's nice to talk all about this, but we better find, get the financing.
We need to find what the, what phase, what the phases are because the mayor mentioned a minute ago, you know, a bare bones type of construction project would be, you know, the pickleball courts only. It would be...
You gotta have parking.
It would be parking. You have to have the curb and gutter on the streets to, to a certain degree.
Yeah, so I put it down, you have to do your construction drawings, mobilization, rough grading. You have to have utilities, bathroom, parking lot, site concrete, pickleball courts. I mean, if you want to open up, that's, that could be your first phase without anything else.
Right. Site concrete would only be the pickleball court. It would, and the, the restrooms. It would not include pavilion. It would not include the admin building.
2.4. That's, that's why I went, and I only gave 130,000 to construction drawing. In the budget, we were given a 4.8 million. They had 230 for construction drawings. I said, okay, we'll give 130,000.
What cost did you use for the concrete, for the pickleball?
They have down site concrete, 560, 560,000. Just, it's in your packet.
So you're talking of that one?
Yeah. The one that Design West gave us from October 8th. Yeah, we have some contingencies. We have, you have contractor overhead of another 12%. We have a contractor bond of 1.2, then we have a 10% contingency. I'm just, so if we're looking, I think we need to say, okay, this is where we feel like we can get funding. I don't want to say, you know, this, I gotta tell you, this has been the most weird week. Everyone I ran into, their word to me was pickleball. And I'm, and I'm going, was it a setup or what? But everyone loves pickleball, I get it. And we're excited if we can get something put together. And so I think there could be, and I probably have some good news. There are probably some guys out there that I know that would probably donate. I was surprised that that was kind of willfully given to me too, that some said, hey, I'd be willing to donate. Here's something going, I can see pickleball can be very popular and I can see our residents are gonna love it. You know, but you're, you're looking for 27 courts, correct? So that's, and now the question is, if, if, it's traditional phasing would put in 12 courts. So if you looked down at St. George, when they did their competition courts, they put in 12 first in 2012 and then they came back in about 2015 and added another 12 to get to their 24 pickleball courts. What I can understand in all of Utah, that's the largest city that has the most pickleball courts, is St. George. Then it appears Bluffdale has 18, is that correct?
Twenty.
Do they have competitions out there with their 20?
No, they do not. They can't because it's too windy.
It's too what?
Windy. It's, it's not, it's not a place to have, that nobody will go there. Nobody even, nobody even likes to play there. They only play there because...
Because of the wind? Now, I have known Highland to be called High Wind. And so, that, that is something we needed, you know, that's a good input.
It's different in the space that we're talking about.
So, so my question is, if we're looking, that we need to get between 2.4 to 2.7, where are we thinking that in the next, you know, nine months that funding would come from and how sure do we have that funding?
So I, um, when I, I just did the math. You just do the, the one, item one from that quote and then you do section three and you exclude lighting.
You have to have lighting to have the tournaments.
We'll just use the sun during the day.
This, this right here is, is sort of some of the things that are, we, we broke it out, which is, I think, almost exactly what you said.
So we can, we can bring in temporary light. The issue is this, there's, there is a park that we're trying to accomplish. There is funding that we can supply and there's funding that we're anticipating the foundation to bring forward, what the work you're doing. If no additional funds come, so we anticipate that, that you're gonna be able to do some really wonderful things, but if nothing happens, then we're gonna end up with a court that we have to be able to afford until we can get additional funding. So, the funding that we're talking about doesn't mean that that's all that would happen. It means this is what it would look like if we're not gonna get the tournament.
I get it.
Then we're not going to put in certain kinds of things. If, if it's coming, then the money's gonna be coming and therefore, we're gonna have additional funds to do additional kinds of things. That's where the lighting would not exist until it was clear that that was, that was coming through.
That makes sense. And the lighting is put in the very last thing, so I think that's...
So it'd be plumbed for it and we would anticipate doing it, but if things don't go the way we hope they do, then that's a cost that it's not going to exist in phase one.
So, Lorna, I've talked a lot with you about this and you know, I support this 100%. I have the concerns about the funding too, but let's just throw out some figures and these are just ballpark figures. So, if the city surplus some land and had a million, maybe a million and a half dollars to put towards this, how assured are you that you could raise another million dollars?
Well, I'll commit to raising 750,000 and I think I can do that. As long as it, as long as there is a possibility, not a possibility, but a, a, I don't know how to say it. It doesn't, I know we can't have a certainty and everybody involved knows that there can't be a certainty. But as long as we are headed down the critical path at the time I am fundraising, I can tell you there are certainly 750,000 out there. And I'm, and I have a plan of fundraising and I have a, it's, I'm very good at it. I have a methodical way of going through it and I will not stop until I've completed the plan. I would expect that it will be more than 750,000.
Yeah, because it doesn't look to me like 750 is gonna be enough with what the funds we have in the city. I, I, that's my only concern, I just, how successful this be. I mean, the foundation right now has 15,000. I mean, that's a, that's a big deficit to come up with. So I, I just, I just want to know how...
You haven't tripled it in six months?
What's that?
You haven't tripled the, your investments in six months?
You know, we just, we just fell in these things. Actually, I'm, Lorna's the chair of the foundation board, but at the same time, I, I just, you know, it sounds like you've got commitments and I just hope that we have enough commitments that we can really move ahead on this and do some other things in the park.
I don't want to mislead you. I don't have commitments because I don't have a commitment from these guys. So, so that's, that's what, and I can tell you that through the course of this last year, when I've been testing the waters to make sure that what I'm telling you is true, is that there is an extraordinary amount of interest. There's an extraordinary amount of money. There's an extraordinary amount of, of, of benefit for Highland in all sorts of ways. Now, I, I understand that you guys have a fiduciary duty to do your jobs and I've, I've tried to give you as much information as I can to make sure that you have that information. However, it is contingent, it is absolutely contingent that we commit to making that date. It isn't absolutely contingent that we, the barring, flood, feast, famine, whatever, that we make it, but it is absolutely contingent that we commit to make that date. Then I can go out and tell people, this is the plan. This plan with me, the plan with the city council, we're all on the same team. We all have the same goal. Everybody is working towards the same thing and I am not telling them something that's not true.
So let's, let's assume, let's now, let's kind of do our, our walkthrough. We're, let's assume it's 2.5 million. You can be successful getting 750,000. As the city gets going, let's assume we can't be. Here we are, we're as a city, we're assuming you get 750. You don't and you only raise 100,000. And if that raises that we're short, we can't get the 27 pickleball courts done, we don't have the funds to do it, would the plan then be that we would give back that money to those donors? Because we didn't, we, we're not gonna be able to meet that deadline because we don't have the funds? I mean, I mean, that's how I think if we're trying to structure something, we gotta structure for success.
I can, I can raise the funds if, if we get the commitment to make that date. I can possibly, and this is, this is just something that I plan on doing if we get that commitment and I wouldn't even suggest for you to make the commitment if, if this, if this didn't work. And, because I'm not interested in wasting anybody's time or money either. It is a possibility that I can talk to the, to the owner of that tournament and say, if for any reason, this tournament, this doesn't make it for this date and it would have to be, it would have to be a real thing. It can't be, okay, that's a soft date or, and we can take as long as we want because it's my reputation and I am absolutely committed to be absolutely honest with everybody who will ever donate a dime to this. So if, if for some reason you're thinking that this is not a real commitment, then just say no. Just say no. Save all of us a lot of headache and just say no. So if you can commit to that date, I can possibly, it is a very difficult person to work with, but I, I have a good relationship with him and I think I could possibly talk him in, in to not moving it out of Utah, doing it at some other place, maybe even Bluffdale for one year so that we could have it the next year. So, the fallback position is yes, maybe 12 courts. Maybe that's the fallback position and maybe it takes longer. And I'm willing to take that chance. I believe he might be willing to take the chance. And if he's not, then I, I think it's probably a no-go because I, because I don't, I don't see how I can be, knowing how close the timeline is, I don't see how I can be honest to the donors and say that it's an absolute surety. However, I can also tell the donors, this is the goal, because I know that's the goal, and the fallback is this, is the next year it comes in. So, it makes it harder to raise the money. It makes it harder to put that stipulation in it. However, it means that we're all being honest, right? So, I'm willing to do that. I think I can get him to do that and I think I can get other major vendors excited about that and not, I'm sorry, and not go use their money elsewhere.
Lorna, what, what do you expect of, has there been any movement towards approaching any of the big corporations we have around here? I mean, you have Josh James that just took Domo public. You have Vivent, you've got Adobe, you've got a lot of big places that they might be real supportive. Has there been any movement or have you contacted any of these people? Is there any interest?
Yes, there's, there's tons of interest. However, there is this, when you're raising funds that people are donating to you, there's, first of all, there's a cycle and second of all, you can't get a commitment and not take the money. If you get a commitment and you say, let me just get back to you on this to see if it's really gonna happen, they, they're not interested. They're not interested, they're not even interested in talking to you again. They, they see what you're doing is just, is just floating the balloon and maybe, it's a waste of their time. So, I do have people who've, not people that I've come to, people that have come to me. And all I can say is I, you have to proceed in a fashion that makes it so that when they commit, I can take the money. Now, we've gone down that trail. We've, we're in the, we, we have a foundation. We have drawings. We have different price structures that we've talked about for certain things. And up until now, we're, it's, I, I feel like a horse that's at the gate. So, pull it up. Just pull it up.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
I ask one question real quick.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Lorna, you talked about a funding cycle. What's your anticipation for how quickly you could get this, you know, funding going, you know, donations? Just because I don't think we want to start a lot of construction until we for sure know how much money we have.
Right, and I don't know, that's, as, as, as far as the funding cycle, the last three months of a year are, are absolutely crucial for personal charitable donations. The, the church gets about half of its money from charitable donations the last three months of the year. It's just, it's just the way the tax cycle works. That's what I'll work on first. I don't know that that's where the most money will come from, but that's what I will work on first. I think it's absolutely necessary that our community donate to this cause. I think they, it's absolutely, it would be my goal to have 100% of the population of Highland give at least $10 to this, to this park. And because that means that I've talked to them, that they know what it is, that they like it and that they're, and that when they talk to their neighbors, they say, yeah, I think it's okay. I gave a little money to it. So, that's my goal right off the bat. Now, that may be counterintuitive to you, maybe get more funds from outside of the community. However, we have a really affluent community and we have some things that may mean that the 750,000 is here by January. So, all I can say is pull up the gate. Just pull up the gate.
You wouldn't stop at 750?
I will not stop until my plan is exhausted. And my plan, it, it includes everybody who I can get a contact with from every corporation that is here in Utah or outside of Utah. So, I have a plan. I'm very good at it. I don't stop. I don't give up. I'm here tonight.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Um, can I, would you, he, the senator wanted to make a...
Oh, sure.
So, just...
I just had a question. So, just a resident, Wilmington, Derek Reichert. Wondering as a resident, how I can be better informed or stay updated on this process? I've tried to follow it through the minutes and the notes to understand budgets and kind of the plan and things. It's kind of a big deal and so I'd like to learn more about, one, the, the funding that the city's looking at. I understand we're looking to sell a park and allocate some of that funding. And then, two, to understand maybe more of the actual funds and, and things that we're looking at and, and be able to provide some insight. I think there's some fantastic ideas. I, I think there's some, some flaws and some things that we need to be careful as, of, as a city. 27 courts is, is pretty significant. Will they get used? Absolutely. I, I think we need to be careful if we're, we're trying to use a tournament to fund that. That's, that's not the best way to fund it in my opinion, but, so I'd like to be involved and, and learn more about it and also maybe provide some, some ideas and, and input on it. I, I love pickleball. I've, I've built pickleball courts. It's a fantastic sport. It's growing. It is a great opportunity for Highland City, so...
Make sure we have your name and a lot of volunteer form and then I'll...
Derek, can you share your background? That might be beneficial for the council as well.
Yeah, so I work in Parks and Recreation. So I actually, I'm the Fitness and Recreation Director with American Fork. And then I'm the past president for Utah Recreation and Parks Association. So I'm pretty dialed in with Parks and Rec.
Well, you sound like a potential good committee member.
So, just wanted, so if I give my information, I can get updates.
If you give my information, you might very well end up on the committee, and then you'll be in the thick of it.
I know, but Derrick, you just mentioned something. You're a resident of Highland, correct?
Yes.
You've come to this meeting, prior to this meeting, you've tried to find information about what us as a council is trying to move forward with this park. And you mentioned you struggled to get information about what our plans are, correct?
Yes.
I think every resident, I gotta be honest, if I, we're going to have every resident coming, you're moving forward on a park, and we haven't had any input. I just, I just have a hard time. It's their park.
So here's how I would answer that, Kurt. Nothing that we've ever done. We didn't have a plan and begin process. When we went out and started soliciting funds, we had a plan, and then we went out and communicated that plan. What we're trying to accomplish here is put a plan in place so that we can actually go out and talk to them about it. We're going to get their input, and if we find that they're not interested, then things can change. But you've got to start with a plan. We've got the pictures. We've got a process that we're talking about how to fund it. We've got a process of phasing it if we're not able to meet it. The impact it would have to the residents, both positive and negative. Those are the kinds of things we talk to them about, begin that process, and start getting all the input. But you can't do that until you formulate that. It's the stake in the ground that we've talked about a few times.
No, I agree, but Brian, but let's assume we commit here that we're going to go for the 27 pickleball courts for the competition. We haven't given any input to residents if that's what they want.
We're committing to a park that has pickleball courts, soccer fields, baseball fields, and other things as a proposal. But we also have contingencies in there that says that if certain things don't happen, we're not building 27 pickleball, we're not building the softball, we're not putting in the pavilion, we're not doing these other things. But there are some minimum things that we will execute on as we're moving forward. And that's why we've talked about phasing. So if certain things don't happen, we don't have to put in 27 courts.
Well, no, and I've mentioned that if they come and raise X number of dollars, as a city, it's wise to use their money to get some of those pickleball courts done. I mean, I recognize there's some benefit on the other behalf in their fundraising. I just want to make sure she's out there fundraising, that if also, no, we're going to pull back because the residents don't want 27, how does that hurt her fundraising? She's out there telling a story to all these corporates, and yet that's not what we're saying here.
So I don't, you're right, but I'm not talking about cutting back the 27 because the residents don't want it. We're proposing it, and we have the ability to make that choice as a city council. So we can choose to move forward with it with or without the residents' approval per se. But we're trying to do what the right thing is, and this is not a pickleball park. This is a whole park, and the money they're raising is not just for the pickleball. It's to help all the pieces. So they may not like the pickleball, but it's going to help other areas. And that's where, you know, our communication to them and helping them see, these are funds for the park, and pickleball is helping drive much of that funding.
But let me just add something to that. I think what we're asked for tonight is a commitment to reserve some of the funds from the surplus and sale of the Spring Creek Park that we can use to develop the Mountain Ridge Park. So we're not really committing at this time for the design of the park. What we're doing is we're committing some funds, saying we're in support of this concept, but you can now go forward saying it's been committed.
No.
Well, how can we, we can't commit to the design of the park before we have public hearings and have input from the citizens.
I, I understand that, and I don't know how to navigate that critical path. So I expect that there is either some wisdom here that will help, or it's not going to be able to be done. And if it's not going to be able to be done, then that's, that's okay. If it's not going to be able to be done, then we just say, we can't do it. And the park is whatever you guys decide to do with it, but I won't be involved. So I am here because there is a critical path, and I believe that we can do it. And I believe that the critical path facilitates the rest of the park. There are grants available for the rest of the park for things that have nothing to do with pickleball. And there are people who are interested in giving funds and in-kind donations and labor that have nothing to do with pickleball. So the pickleball is the vehicle that makes things happen. And the most important thing here is that those courts themselves bind the community together. And those courts make it so that there's entrepreneurial opportunities for people that you guys have not even thought of yet. The people out there who have no other way to be an entrepreneur in Highland can do it. And they will, if you give them the opportunity. And you know what? You're going to have young people who have opportunities there. You're going to have scholarships that will come here. You're going to have the AAU that feeds into the Olympics, who are going to want to have a national championship here. And if that's not good for Highland, then we just say it's not good for Highland. And if it's not worth taking the risk to try and hit that critical path, to make a commitment for that critical path, then let's just not do it.
But Lorna, look, you constantly are trying to kind of convince us this is a good idea. I'm convinced. I've been convinced for months. The problem is, and I'm not trying to be rude or anything, but the stuff that's been presented in the agenda is the following. The mayor is proposing to reserve 50% of the funds from the proceeds of the sale of the Spring Creek Park for the development of Mountain Ridge Park. This would meet the requirements for the pickleball proponents to begin fundraising. I thought that's what you wanted. The problem is, what you're asking for is for us to commit to build 27 courts. And I don't know if we can do that. It's not even on the agenda.
Yeah.
There's another, there's two parts to the funding thing. One was a percentage. A proposal was 50. It could be 75. It could be a fixed amount. I don't know how much, I don't know how we can do a fixed amount when we don't know what the total amount is. But it could be, it's just a percentage. And then another part of it would be, okay, to get the ball rolling so that we can fund the design and development, engineer, commit a fixed amount of money today and say, you can use up to this before we ever sell the land, before, not contingent on anything. And we can say that money is additive or inclusive of the percentage that we added. That's your call. But to get moving forward, I think we need a commitment of X amount of money to get the ball rolling. I don't know what the right number is.
Hey, Eric, I think that's what you're saying, but I agree with Scott. I think what Lorna is saying, she needs a commitment tonight about 27 courts mid-August. Am I right, Lorna?
So here's.
For me to raise funds for a 27-court facility that's going to be done in mid-August, yes, I need that commitment.
So here's a concept. You know, what we're committing to is, we're committing to building a park, okay? We're committing that we're going to try to build that park within a certain period of time, based upon certain funding. If we don't have the funding, it doesn't take away our commitment to build the park. It takes away our ability to build it the way it's designed on here, within a year or within maybe two years. But it doesn't change the fact that we can commit to building a park, and we can commit to building the park based upon certain things happening. So we can say, we're going to build it in phases. If these things don't happen, if we don't have X amount of money committed from volunteers by X date, then we're going to reduce the courts to half. Because if we don't have the funding to do it, which is going to require a certain amount of funding to do it, we can't do it anyway.
Right.
So we can, we can say, we're going to build 27 courts, and as long as the funding that is coming in from here meets a certain level, then we're going to continue building. If not, we do 12 courts, we put the grass in, and that's phase one. And we try to get at the tournament in the following year. And we put in the additional courts in the following year. And if it doesn't come that next year, if it doesn't ever come, we have 12 courts. We've got lots of grass for baseball, for soccer and lacrosse and all the other things. And from that point on, we continue to try to get a pavilion and other things, other amenities. But that piece of land over there has no value to any residents today except when we go do movie in the park during the Highland fling, and they drive in and they watch a movie. But that really, you know, having grass over there is going to be more beneficial. So the residents are going to benefit just by us taking that money out of this other park and putting into it. And we can commit based upon certain things that we will do certain stages within this park. I believe we can commit to her that, as of today, we're going to put X amount in, and by a certain date, she has to deliver a certain amount of commitments and funding so that we can make sure that we deliver. If she doesn't reach it, at that point in time, we can pull back and say, we're not going to execute on this court because we don't have the physical funds to be able to truly make it happen.
But I think we also have to, we do have to commit that we would like to see this pickleball, these courts built.
Yes. We are moving forward, but there is a contingent that says, if this doesn't happen, then we have the ability to back off. But if it doesn't happen, it's because she wasn't able to get the tournament anyway, and so the timing.
Yeah.
But she would like to know how many of us on the council are committed to that date and that,
Yes.
the building of the park.
And all I'm saying is, we can make that commitment, but also have a contingent upon that tournament. And the statement was made, this isn't just about the tournament. The tournament is helping in certain things.
It's a vehicle for getting the fundraising.
Yes, and in and of itself, it will raise some funds, and it will continue to generate funds. But this is, we're getting donations of people who are going to donate into the park. That's a permanent donation of possibly, you know, 100,000, half a million. That's a permanent, that has nothing to do with the park, or that has nothing to do with the tournament necessarily. They may be excited because their name will be all over the country. But it's also, their name could be on the park, it could be on that pickleball court for, you know, their kids and their grandkids. I mean, people donate for buildings and put their name on it. It's that kind of concept. It's not, all the funding is intended just from a tournament to raise enough to fill it in. No, that's, we know that that won't happen. That's really just to maintain it and keep it in pristine condition.
So just for courtesy's sake, I think.
And that's what we would do if we can't get something like that, and we're not getting the funding in. Then we cut it back and say, okay, we're only going to do 12. The rest of it goes in grass. If something big ever happens, we get the donations, then we'll bump it up at that point in time.
So can I ask the city attorney a question? Will you look at this agenda item and kind of give us some guidance on what the council needs to do? I mean, are we just verbally saying, hey, we support this? Or do we need to pass a motion? Do we need to have a figure? I'm a little bit perplexed what we're doing here.
So the item that's been noticed is the reservation from the proceeds of the sale. So that's what you can take action on, but I think if you were just giving a verbal commitment, it's not a formal motion. It's simply just a verbal commitment for what it's worth, but there's no contract. It's really just the council's.
There's a trust relationship.
It's that trust relationship.
So we can move to use proceeds. We can also move to advance money, if you will, say, we're willing to spend this now. So have some hard money now.
How much money do we have to advance?
So let's look at the 50% from Spring Creek. We have a problem. We haven't had, we haven't even, we haven't seen a plan. I mean, we've seen several, but we've never, we don't have a plan. We haven't voted on as a council to be able to say we're disposing of that property. We don't have an offer on the property, know what we're selling it for, and we haven't closed. I mean, there's, I'm not saying we can't say Spring Creek because, as a council, we haven't even agreed, I mean, in a motion that we're signing it.
But could we just say surplus of city property? Because I think that's the goal. That's what we've talked about. I mean, I support this. I just want to make sure that we do it.
I just want to make sure legally.
Yeah.
How we're doing this, because we don't have, we haven't.
Kurt, you're absolutely right, in my opinion.
What you would be motioning is, this is contingent. So if the property sells, what percentage would be reserved for this? Because you're right, there's the process we have to follow in order to get those proceeds. But, and then the other thing I wanted to mention, we talked about two different issues. One is timing, one is funding. Originally, we started about timing. And so as Todd explained, the state law requires us, for any public works project, over $125,000 to put it out to bid. So the option of having the city in charge would require the period of time for the bidding process, maybe a month, maybe six weeks. If the foundation did it, you could avoid the bidding perhaps, but we would have to engage in a private-public partnership. That would have to be contractual. The foundation board would have to vote on it. You would have to come back to the council to vote on it. So that takes time as well. So I'm not sure, if you're looking at time constraints, whether you're really going to save much time in the end.
My concern is, having been involved with the construct, or the development of the Highland Foundation, I think before you go into public-private partnership, you're going to have to clear it through the attorneys that back this foundation, which is Kirk and McConkey. And so, you know, I don't even know if you can do that with the foundation, to be honest. Because the foundation was set up to generate funds for things. I'm not sure the foundation was ever set up to develop projects. So we'd have to look into that pretty carefully.
Can I ask Todd one thing? Is it possible to have, is it possible to have the engineering from the foundation and the rest from the city?
Sure.
Because that's what has to be done now.
Yeah.
Could that happen?
Well, currently, you're doing engineering on your own dime with the foundation. I mean.
All donated, by the way?
Yeah, and so, I mean, it's donated work right now. The point is, is it's on city property. And so where you connect those in is where we have the issue. We need to have, making sure that the public elected officials have the right to say what's on the property, if that makes sense. So you're donating time to design a park, but ultimately, it hasn't been approved yet. And so that's where we're at right now. You can keep going with engineering because it's being paid for. It's very similar to developers in the city.
Okay, so it would take city funds to do the engineering. So is it possible to have the city funds go into the Highland Foundation, pay for the engineering, and then just everything leave the foundation? Because that's, after that, the critical path is starting to be hit. It's the engineering that has to go on right now without.
That's probably a question that I would have to look into. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head because I've never dealt with this, so.
Well, I've read, you know, the statute as we've sat here. And it's clear that the request for bids is for a project that will be above 125,000. So that envisions that previous to that, there's been some work done to get a cost estimate in order to, so there must be some preliminary design.
But Tim, what Lorna's saying is just design, not construction. She's asking if the design can be done through the foundation using city funds, correct, Lorna?
No, they're all donated funds. Yeah.
It would have to be funds that the city puts in because it has to, unless I can.
But you're talking about engineering.
Engineering, unless I can talk to, okay, so Design West that has helped us with this up to now has donated hundreds and hundreds of hours towards making sure that we have something that is plausible. I am sure they are hoping they get the bid. I am sure they are prepared to give a bid to the city. However, because of the nature of a city and bidding, first of all, some of the stuff would have to be redone if it was another company that did it. And second of all, the engineering process has to start now for the construction to be done on time. So I possibly could talk to the engineering company and see if they'll go ahead and engineer the park. And then we will pay them at the, you know, when the foundation has money. I'm pretty sure that, as a businessman, that's not a really. I'm, I'm pretty sure that as a businessman, that's not a really good idea.
Well, but how much are they going to charge? I mean, you can make a pretty good down payment. I mean, you've got some money in the foundation.
Uh, if, uh, if I could possibly, if I could give them an assurity that if, uh, I don't even know how to do that and I don't, you know, I'm not interested in doing something that's not, that's circumventing the law. I'm ju, uh, only to expedite the pro, the process. So if, if that can be done and still be lawful, then I'm willing to do whatever I can to do that. Now perhaps I can talk to them and say, if they didn't have to go out to a bid process, would you be willing to put in the design? And probably just sorry, guys, for the pickleball courts, not for the whole thing, uh, so that we can hit our critical path. And they may do that if they know they are going to get paid in the end for some.
For at least for the pickleballs.
Yeah, some fashion. And perhaps, uh, we come up with a way that if, if I get hit by a bus tomorrow, which is, I've, I've said all that to y'all. If I get hit by a bus tomorrow, what's our fallback position? Our fallback position is 12 courts, but what would be the fallback position for them? If I get hit by a bus, then we have to maybe decide what that is and, and how I can maybe this. However, it would be much easier if the city can donate to the foundation. I don't know if that's possible, but.
My advice would be.
The city, the city, the city should pay for the design, for the engineering.
The city, I don't think has any motivation to donate to the foundation because there's no tax advantage. The, the purpose of the foundation is to generate charitable donations to a 501(c)(3) entity.
Right. I can see that there's no financial motivation, but there would be.
To transfer money to the foundation.
Uh, there is no financial motivation, but there is a, a, a benefit to the community motivation.
What is the possibility that we use what we have, which is not very much, as a down payment? And then start fundraising and then use the fundraising to pay for the engineering? That would be more practical because then we, we're not linked into the city because that seems iffy. And that way, that way we use charitable donations to do the engineering.
It's possible as long as it doesn't, if it doesn't, uh, slow it down. If it slows it down, if they won't do it until we raise the funds, then, then it's, then, then that doesn't work.
We keep getting the cart before the horse because we can't do it till we have fundraising. And, and so it's, we've, somehow we've got to have the fundraising in order to proceed. And, and it would seem to me that if we can start the engineering, show them that we're underway, that that would be sufficient to get the fundraising going.
Well, it would be, it would be, it would be sufficient in most cases, but in this case, it wouldn't be. Because what we will be doing is, is a fundraising for a specific purpose. And the specific purpose has, it's, 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 it's motivated for the corporations. It's motivated by, um, by advertising things. There's, there's, uh, there's all sorts of, there's all sorts of reasons why a corporation would want to do it. And I'm sure you know what they are. However, none of that happens if we can't get it started immediately. Nothing, nothing happens. No corporate donations happen if we can't get it started right away. Nothing happens.
So I have a question for you, Lorna. So the, the two vendors that you have talked with that are really the only two that do pickleball per standards or certified.
Right.
What would be their response time to the bid request?
They'd probably do it really quickly. They do.
What's, what's really quickly?
Um, I don't know. They do, uh, we have the, I believe, I'm not positive. I believe we have to have the engineering. Is that right?
When we say design, we're talking about engineering.
Yeah.
Correct.
So it's not concept.
It's different.
Well, this, this, this is.
This is concept.
This is design.
Okay. But when Todd's talking about.
It's concept design, then they take this and take it a next step further. And then the engineering is all the stuff underneath this.
Yes. So what we're talking about now is making this something that somebody could build and you could create a bid package out of.
Correct.
For someone to do construction.
You have to have the engineering for that?
Yes, yep.
That's, that's what we're talking about starting is the, the process of having this turned into a full design.
It would turn into a design package where you have a grading plan, a landscape plan, uh, you know, a utility plan. All of that would be done.
Todd, if we limit the scope of this to just the pickleball court.
And the parking lot.
And the parking.
Correct, yeah.
What would the estimate be?
And what? Bathrooms.
Yeah, you don't want to have bathrooms.
And that would be portion, part, portion of it. But are you asking for design or construction?
Design.
Design.
You know what? I, I was just talking to Tim. We were trying, trying to go through the, uh, our ordinance as far as solicitation. You know, we, we've got estimates in here, but I can't imagine that this would exceed 50 to 75,000 dollars.
I agree. And if that's the case, then we don't need to go out to bid. Is that correct, Tim?
Well, so we were going through the, the ordinance right now. The, the 125 that Tim talked about it, it's actually with.
It's for construction, but, uh, and we have to prepare the cost estimate. And if the project itself is going to be above that. And I think, you know, it's three, 3% every year it increases. So now it's probably around 140,000. We know this is going to be over a million dollars. And so I think the project itself qualifies for the bidding requirements.
Okay.
For, for construction.
But you were talking about.
Not just the.
Design.
Design.
So you can't pull out the engineering separately then?
Design, we need to look into that because there's a separate piece of our code that requires that we get certain bids as well. Uh, and I've got to look at that with.
So engineering and design would count as services, correct?
Correct.
So our code says that over 50,000 has to go to competitive bid.
And I had mentioned 50. So if we can keep Design West, uh, their portion of the project under 50,000, we could actually award that today and have them start.
Well, and we have, we have 15,000 that can come in from the foundation.
So it'd be 35 from the city. I mean, if it's donated, do you still have to consider the 50,000? I mean, if the city only has to give 35.
We wouldn't even, the foundation would just pay directly to the engineering firm. We wouldn't pay the city.
So I'm sorry, how much is the city paying in your?
35.
Um, so over 25,000 has to be approved by city council.
Yeah, we can do that.
So, so Todd, just tell me, and I mean, I understand and I appreciate Design West doing this. But this layout, and I appreciate when you say hundreds of hours. I, I'm just going to say it probably wouldn't take hundreds of hours. I mean, to me, this, we could get other design companies to give us bids also. I mean, so we don't have to just, I mean, I get nervous when you're saying it's only this one company we can go with or, you know, but this here, you probably could get bids within a week of what they could do to do a layout for phase one, if you want to say.
Yeah.
Fairly fast.
We could get other proposals. We definitely could get other proposals, so.
What is the, what, what's the benefit for that?
To make sure it's competitive. You don't even know if Design West, let's assume their engineering is 50 and you had a bid at 40. You want to keep it, Design West, is it worth 10,000 or is it worth a week to find out if you can get it for lower? We could authorize something up to this amount, but we still could go out to bid and, and get it.
So are you talking about getting it out to bid or just saying what?
Just engineering.
Just design.
Just designing.
Lorna, just design.
Not construction.
Not construction.
The engineering part.
Exactly.
So would you, do you need to, can you get bids that fast for engineering?
With the solicitation, we could get it within two or three weeks.
Okay, so that, that's, that's, that slows it down. So.
So if we.
Is there a, is there a, is there a, I mean, I'm, I'm not interested in, I mean, I believe there's a fiduciary duty to, to pay as little as possible. As, as little, not as possible, as little to get the quality services that you need.
So I guess my question is this. Obviously, we need to put it out to bid when we construct this, even if it's just the pickleball court, because it's well over the limits you've given us. I'm not so sure if there's a time commitment here that we need to be, if it's a small amount under our limits, that we need to put it out to several du, design firms to bid. Because basically, you know what you need. 24 pickleball courts, three in the middle, you know, some bathrooms and a parking lot. I'm not sure that you need 10 people to, to bid on that design, do you? Because there's only one way to build pickleball courts.
Right, and there's.
And, and I, and if, and I can see how it'd slow down the process because you want to get out with some commitment from us to get out and get fundraising. And you want to do it by the end of the year. So I'm not sure that we need to have several bids to design it. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, isn't it? I mean, the rest of the park, yes.
You can't, and you, and you can't legitimately take his design and tell people to do engineering from it. They have to do their own design and they will charge us for that.
Oh, this, there's so much more engineering that still has to happen in layout.
I know, but this is.
The reason is, I'll, I'll tell you, I've, I've done building layouts and we just get, I'd have my graphic designer. This is a graphic design that's done. This is not any engineering. This is graphic design. And I'm not trying to, but not trying to be a little, but this is a graphic design.
Right.
They just go and, you know.
Okay, but it would, it would have to go through, it would have to go through the same process that we have gone through. And they will charge us for it. They can't just take that design, they'll have to, they'll have to do their own rendering.
Yes.
Aaron, if, if I'm understanding you correct, if we keep the engineering at around 50, the foundation pays 15. The city pays 35, then we're well under our limit, provided the council approves the expenditure of 35,000. Which, by the way, we do have surplus in our reserves that we could use for 35.
So it's not the amount that you have to approve, it's the contract for services that you have to approve over. So if it's over 25, it needs to come to council. If it's over 50, it has to go to bid.
So that would be a meeting that we could hold, a short meeting if we all saw the contract, we're all in agreement. That's where we'd spend, if, if that happened before November 13th, we have those contracts. We could do a, a quick, short public notice meeting to approve that.
So let me, let me, let me toss out a motion for this particular thing. Because we're kind of assuming that, that that would be working before we would do the engineering, design specs. So I think we at least got to talk about, and I'm not, you know, this is a stake in the ground, so let's rip it apart if it doesn't.
A movable stake, right?
A movable stake, exactly. With your hand, you know? All right, I, I would move that we approve the expenditure of up to 60% of the Spring Creek proceeds contingent upon its sell for the building of the, um, city park next to the Mountain Ridge Junior High, or the city property next to, I'm not calling it the, any given park name because it's just property for right now. The prop, the city property next to the Mountain Ridge Junior High, which will be, uh, built in, let's see, did I even do that right? Which will be built in phases. In addition, the council supports the phasing of the park to be completed. The phasing of the park and that it will. I thought I had this and it made sense, and now I'm reading it again. Uh, it'll be, okay, so here we go. Council supports the phasing of the park to complete the building design, 27 pickleball courts, some parking and restrooms in phase one for a completion date of August 1st, 2019.
I'll second it.
Now. So I'll call, call the question.
Uh, before you do that, can I?
Right.
Just insert a question. Are we going to throw in funding for the design?
Well, the reason why I left it out is because of what Aaron said a minute ago is the, the funding is in there. We have to make a decision of actually.
Approving the contract?
Approving the contract for it. So I'm, I'm seeing that as coming in the next meeting.
Separated action.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
But it can be something that's called, uh, in a, when the information's here and not wait until the 13th?
Right, yeah.
Right.
That's what the mayor was saying.
Sure.
So I'm just, I'm putting this out there as the motion based upon what we're talking about. And then that can be an item. If this is approved, then we're talking about, okay, how do we expedite each of the pieces? And, and he would call a meeting that would expedite that piece. And we may have other things that would have to happen too.
So can I just get some clarity? So the first part is 60% of the proceeds, if it sells of the Spring Creek Park, goes to the mountain, by the property.
For the building of.
Mountain, okay, so 60% of the Spring Creek proceeds goes to the building of the city park next to Mountain Ridge Junior High to be built in phases.
Of, of a park on the city property next to you.
Okay. Now, the second part of it is phasing of the park to be completed. Where can, you put down in this motion, 27 pickleball courts.
Correct.
To be completed by August 1st, 2019.
Correct.
And parking lot and, or restrooms.
Some parking.
Yeah, some parking.
So why happens if we can't complete that? We just passed this.
Functioning pickleball courts, because there's some things that make it.
Well, that's a given.
Okay.
I mean, I.
It's all contingent.
Semantics, I'm, I'm fine if you want it functioning, but that to me is.
Okay.
So help me, so Brian, what's your, are you committing that we are doing 27 pickleball courts no matter what? Even over a phase if it takes 10 years?
So here's, yeah, so here's, here's the part that I didn't put in here. And so this is a part that we need to, to work on is, there's a contingency that if there's a certain portion of funding that isn't, isn't committed to by a certain date, then our commitment to this size and this date become null and void. Because I believe that, that there has, we have to be able to see some funding coming in by a certain date. I don't know what date you can commit to that, that they would be willing to do it. But I think that we have, we have to be able to pull back if we're not hitting that.
So I put in one of these documents that we would monthly give you a report of grants that we've applied for, corporations that we've contacted and what their status is. And, uh, private donations, where that stands, who we've contacted, what we've got in, in motion and what we expect to happen with that. And that will be reported to all of you guys monthly. At some point, it will be clear to all of us that it should, that we are not going to reach, uh, August 1st or we are going to reach August 1st. And at that point, if, if, if it happens that we, uh, we cannot make August 1st, then, you know, then it's, then it's a different project and we, we should, we should.
We need, we need a date here that commits us to make a go or no-go decision. It doesn't mean that we can't say go then and then the next month, say no.
Okay, so that, that has to be on a, I think that has to be on a monthly basis. I think you just have to say, this month, are we headed forward? Does it look like it's working? You guys meet every month and you can see it. Otherwise, uh, otherwise it, I don't see how with, as little information as we have, we can put anything that makes, that is, that is an honest, uh, estimate of what it, what it would be. So you guys meet once a month. You can say, let's move forward. You can say, phase it.
I think, I think by the end of the year, we'll know.
But ma, mayor, could I just jump in here? And I rare, I rarely do this. I don't like throwing red flags on the field.
Yes, you do, you love it.
But, but I do think we need to limit the motion to the reservation of the sale of the property. Because if the council were to by motion voice their support for a specific number of courts that's not been noticed, I think that would be beyond the scope of what the agenda would permit.
Well, it, it doesn't say that we're, we're committing. It says, in addition, the council supports this, which was your wording that you said, we can express our support for it. So I use the council's wording to be able to do that.
So we can support it, can't we? We're not saying it's going to happen.
You, you certainly may, may support it. I think, I think your support would be perhaps best by directing staff to begin design for 27 courts or, or that, that, that can show that we're going to take a step forward, but we probably need to come back for you to decide what you want to see on this ground.
So can you suggest a wording that works?
That is a commitment.
That.
Can you put contingencies?
It's got to be a commitment.
Lorna is saying she wants a commitment. The council is saying support is not a commitment. And so I just, I just, I just think that we can't quite accomplish what we're trying to.
Can you, can you put it down that we will build 27 pickleball courts contingent upon the following funding being met? That by, you know, January 1st, that the Highland Foundation has donated to Highland City $500,000?
Kurt, Kurt, let's say that they do that. Are you, are you as a council committed tonight to say, we are building 27 courts without the public?
That's what I've been asked.
Input. Are you, are you willing to do that?
And ultimately, I think what Tim is saying, we can't. And ultimately, I think what Tim is saying, we can't, he doesn't think that we can put that in a motion tonight anyway.
But we can commit to build pickleball courts without saying the exact number, can't we?
Yeah.
I mean, and, and that's the number we're shooting for, but I think we can commit to the project, but I don't think we have to say exactly the number.
So we, can we direct staff to?
Redact the part of 27 pickleball courts and we just say, complete the pickleball courts? Or, or complete pickleball courts, parking and restrooms and the engineering and design.
I'll second that.
In Phase 1. Does that make you feel better?
I'll second it.
No, we don't want to hear from the audience.
One.
No, please come up.
While Derek's coming up, I will, one last stake I want to throw out there. I 100% agree with Todd. Staff will do whatever council directs. When we're talking about timelines, we've all voiced it that this is a tight timeline. Another red flag per se, we are two department heads short currently. We have been for some time. Luckily, we have one department head coming in two months, or two weeks, a week and a half. I've got a countdown going. We are still going to be short a department head. Todd has road designs coming up for our 2019 project. So we will do what council directs, but please be aware of what you are directing us to do and the fact that we have Lone Peak coming up as well as plenty of other, other issues that staff will need to do.
But, but you could coordinate with a private design firm. That's what they're always using. I mean, just kind of look at it and say, hey, this meets city standards. I mean, to me, I know that's a lot of work, but it seems like you could do that.
You're right. A lot of it will be outside of us, but you know, and I don't want to speak for Todd because I don't know exactly what he's going to have to do. But Todd does a lot and I worry about him a bit.
We all worry about him. I, I think.
Did you have something quick to say?
I haven't seen the numbers. I'm wondering, does 60% of that sale plus $750,000 equal enough to build 27 courts?
We don't.
Best case scenario.
We don't.
Even close. I guess what I'm asking is if it's short, is the city council want to come up with the additional million or whatever?
Well, that's, that's a minimum commitment.
Here's how I see it. We're only going to have so much money. We change the design of the park and we put the money in and so it becomes less. So we change it down to 12 courts. We change it to only grass. We put in less parking. We do all the things that we can to reduce it so that that money is being used. Because we're not, you can't, we're not going to make up money. We can't print money like the federal government.
But I think this money's probably looking for a 27 court complex, which would be fantastic.
If she can't deliver, then we won't, but if she can deliver, it should be enough to cover that.
The 60% plus the $750,000?
Based upon the numbers that we currently have, we could also change that number from 60 to 80 or to 50 or whatever if we needed to.
I guess, I'm wondering if you're willing to that. Cause I, it would be fantastic. It has to be done right. If you're going to build this in Highland, Utah and everybody's going to come, you got to build the right court with post-tension concrete, with wind screens, with, otherwise they're not going to come and it's not going to work. And so I would hate to see it rushed and not done right. Because then, everybody loses, so.
Or it costs more to go back to fix the issue because we didn't do it right.
Not interested in that.
So.
That's, that's a really, that's really good input.
Fantastic firms in Utah that can design it. These folks are very capable. They've done great projects. There could be some other designs that could get creative and use the space that we have. I know it would take more time, but 27 courts is bigger than anything in the Western United States. And if you don't do it right, it's not going to function and they can, and you can get the best price. So I think it'd be worth taking the time to find the right firm for the right price to design it.
But I think what Lorna's telling us, and I, I agree with that, but what Lorna's telling us, if we don't kind of expedite this, there's not going to be the interest in, in the fundraising to develop 27 courts. So you might do it right, but there won't ever be the money. And I, I think that's, so we kind of, this is kind of the problem we've got, I think. It's the dilemma.
We have, we have, we have, the National Pickleball Association is helping us with that. We've had input from, from.
But that's not, that's not the National Pickleball Association.
No one on this council is going to approve a part.
So we, we need to come back to the motion here and let the council.
It just needs to be done.
Do you, can you restate your motion?
Yes, let me. Cindy, let me go through the motion one more time so that, and the council.
See if your little red flag.
We can all listen to it. Hopefully I get it right. All right, so I move that we approve the expenditure of up to 60% of Spring Creek, Spring Creek proceeds contingent upon its sale for the building of a park on the city property next to Mountain Ridge Junior High, which will be built in phases. In addition, the council supports the phasing of the park to complete the design engineering, pickleball courts, some parking and restrooms in Phase 1 for a completion date of August 1st, 2019.
I'll second it.
Flags?
Move the question.
Question moved. That means we have to vote. All in favor?
Can I ask one question just though, I mean, I, but support, we're not agreeing.
But we can't.
I know.
According to the rules.
Okay.
We, that's, that's Robert's rules. That's what we, so we have a question. So all in favor of Brian's motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none? Uh, onto the next item.
I didn't vote. I'm, I'm a aye on that motion. No, I'm, I'm an aye.
Okay. So, um, question that you, comment you want to make?
Now you can ask your question.
I just want to make sure that motion, we didn't commit ourselves. It says support. That's what I set an aye on. That was the support that we supported. We did not pass that we're doing 27 pickleball courts.
That is, that is correct. The council made clear that that support is aspirational and is made in good faith, but is not binding or contractual.
Why did you have to add that on?
It's not in the motion.
It's not in the motion.
Okay.
Okay, that's just an explanation. So you're okay. You can go forth.
You can take the word.
So I, I, let's talk the next couple of days about members and like talk to you about being on the court.
The important thing also along with this is we have to begin the engagement of the residents. We have to begin that process. This is a city park, not a pickleball park. We have to begin that whole engagement process. It's good for you because you're going to be asking them.
What does that look like?
That looks like we begin to let the residents know that this is it and we start having meetings where we begin showing this stuff. Informational meetings where we invite them to come here on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, some nights.
Okay, so.
Begin showing them, talking about it, explaining to them, getting them excited about pickleball and.
Let, define for me what, uh, what it looks like that city people make it quit, make it not go forward. Just so I know, so I know.
Lorna, that just means that we'll start the design and residents will have an opportunity to look at it and, and give input. That's what it looks like.
So they could say, we want three baseball fields instead of two. We want.
No baseball fields.
Exactly. No baseball fields. We want lacrosse. We want.
Okay, so if, if, if you pluck the pickleball out of it, because that's what I'm, the people I am approaching to give funds to, what makes it so that doesn't happen that the city, that the people can, can, uh, make it stop? Just so that I, that if I go out and raise funds, I could tell them, this is contingent on this. Perhaps that's what I'll say. But I have to, I have to know what that is.
If this is as popular as you claim, then people are going to be clamoring to get the pickleball in.
I'm pretty sure they will, but I, I.
I hear hesitancy. This is not likely.
We also have to recognize that no matter what we do as a council, there's always a segment out there that will not be happy.
Okay, so what does that, what does, what?
And we have to be willing, and we have to be willing to listen to the clamor, but stick with what our decision is.
It would have to be major clamor from people saying, not only no, but hell no to a pickleball court because of these reasons.
So not one loud voice?
No.
No. It would have to be a serious contingency saying that.
Okay, that's fair.
But the whole issue is, we're saying, we're getting a park at, at a lesser cost because of this and it's going to help you with things that you like. You may not like pickleball. You may like basketball, but we're going to get a park because pickleball is going to help drive funds for the completion of the whole park.
We're maintaining other parks that we have now. So that's fair.
The goal is to generate support. You might get a lot of people come on board and say, hey, we want to donate. This is great.
For the baseball donors and not the pickleball.
But for the park, but it all may help.
So can we, in the next newsletter, put that this is happening? Is, can we do that?
We can put a, I'll, I'll put something in my mayor's minute, my mayor's notes.
We, we need to begin a schedule of when we are going to begin pushing residents to come in and give us feedback.
Can I talk to you about that?
No.
Offline. So I think we want to.
Who will?
You can talk to Brian or me. He's your committee guy. So we haven't approved that yet, but that's the intent. All right. Thank you, Lorna.
I borrow somebody's rendering.
All right. Well, that, I'm sorry. I let that wander. It's my fault. Okay, we've taken care of items five and six. Now we're on to item seven, which is standard of conduct of Highland for the Highland City Municipal Code and that is Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of months ago, we met and looked at a first draft. I returned to the drawing board and I'm presenting now kind of a reworked version, trying to address the concerns that were raised at our last meeting. Just as a brief review of what the municipal officers and employees ethics code states. There are four sections that talk about what would constitute a conflict. One is if an official assists a third party in transacting business with the city for compensation. That has to be disclosed in writing in a sworn affidavit given to the mayor and then also disclosed publicly in a meeting. The second one that's mentioned is when you're a business owner or you have an interest in a business that's regulated by the city. So for example, if one of you, you know, had a business license because you operated within Highland, you would also have to submit a sworn statement to the mayor. The third is when you have an interest in a business or are a director of an entity that's conducting business with the city. So this is different from the second one because the business is not just in the city. It's any business from anywhere that's transacting business with the city. And finally, the fourth one is what I consider a catch-all. And the state code says, any personal interest or investment which creates a conflict between the employee's or the official's personal interests and his public duties shall be disclosed in open meetings. So this one is not just financial. It also is a little bit broader by describing any personal interest which conflicts with a officer's public duties. But state code does not define what personal interest means. Since we met last time, I have received input from citizens, also from council members. I'd like to especially express appreciation to Scott for what he provided. I've looked at the Code of Conduct and Ethics ordinances of West Jordan, Orem, South Ogden, Kaysville and South Jordan. And so what I am presenting to you tonight is to address the two primary concerns that were expressed last time and this is in line with what the other jurisdictions have done, which is listing a conflict where there's some sort of, uh, financial interest, which is in line with what I've read in the state code. And then also, the other definition I've provided is that a public official couldn't assist a person exercising claims or contemplating exercising claims against the city. Naturally, you wouldn't want to, if you're wearing your city council member hat, also be involved if there's a person with opposing interests to the city that's contemplating a claim. And now the, the other, the other issue I wanted to take a stab at was how do we prevent the council from using this as a sword against each other? So the state has a wonderful means to accomplish that through an independent, an independent ethics commission. In talking to the other cities, there's already an interlocal agreement that other cities have where when an ethics complaint is made, they randomly select a three-member pool from the entities that belong to the Ethics Commission Committee. And there's lengthy procedures and, and standards that are outlined. So what I would recommend is if the council's inclined to move forward with an ethics commission, is that we join with the other jurisdictions in that interlocal agreement.
Uh, Tim, could you clarify that? As I looked at the code, it, it, it allows us to create our own ethics commission. If we go with the independent commission, isn't that a, a commission that is established at the state level?
There is one at the state level, but this is, would be separate. We wouldn't be hopping onto the state's commission. We would, our commission would be this interlocal one with the neighboring cities.
With multiple municipalities.
Yes.
Which already exists, right?
It, yes.
And we actually, I, I saw a draft of that where we were invited back in 2013 to participate. In that, we didn't have an ethics code. I don't know why we didn't participate. It may, I may have gotten to council, may not have.
And in reviewing what their requirements are, an ethics complaint would require two residents or two citizens. So you couldn't just have an individual lone wolf making an allegation. It would have to be with at least two parties that make the allegation, the commission forms to review it and they will take whatever action is necessary to see if there's substance to it. Then they will give their findings to the city council with any appropriate recommendation they have for it.
And you're, you're referencing Title 63A, aren't you? When you start talking about that, because we've left, I think you've left Title 10.
No, I'm in 10, 3, 13, 11.
10, 3, 13, 11.
Which is the Municipal Ethics Act, right?
Mm-hmm.
Talking about who can file a claim? I don't think that's in 13, 11.
Let me, Tim, before we, when you talked about the independent ethics commission. Go ahead.
Mind answering that question first? I, I'm not seeing what, what.
Look in 10, 3, 13, 11.
I'm in 10, 3, 13, 11. What paragraph?
Municipal Ethics Commission.
Okay.
A municipality, sub-part 1.
Right.
May establish by ordinance an ethics commission.
I'm just wondering who's filing the complaints?
Oh, so the interlocal.
That was the question. You said there's two people.
The interlocal agreement, which I've reviewed, which the other cities have adopted, have procedures that, that they have adopted on the interlocal agreement.
It's not in the code. That, that was my question.
Correct. So that's, so if you want to go with the ethics commission, I would recommend we join the municipality interlocal commission and I would come back to you with an interlocal agreement.
And it's that interlocal agreement that determines who can file a claim? Because I believe Title 63A makes a different exception on who can file a claim and I think it does get down to one person in 63A. So that's, that's my concern.
So the interlocal agreement would be before you in a future meeting for consideration.
At a future date?
Yes.
We have to have an ethics code first before we can join the ethics commission.
Go, go ahead, Kurt. I have another question, but Kurt's next.
That was, I was just having a question about the ethics commission. We don't need anything to state what ethic commission we're using that we're going to be using. Next to where that, you just answered it. That's where the interlocal agreement would state, that's where we're going to use it.
That's right. We could, we could create our own city commission, but these types of things are so infrequent, it just makes sense to kind of pool resources rather than handling it ourselves.
Back to my question then, Tim. I, I had emailed you, I think yesterday or day before maybe, regarding some of the more subjective portions of this. All of the violations are linked to monetary values. And I'm, I'm wondering how we're going to monetize the difference of opinion? Because that doesn't seem to be something you can monetize. My other question is, in many cases, we're tromping over other rules, particularly whistleblower regulations, potential personnel issues that we're advised to get engaged in with if we become aware of it. In fact, we established this last meeting, 10 days for notification of an HR issue that we become aware of. So I'm concerned that we're, that we, we're crossing over other ordinances that we put in place and we can't monetize these. and we can't monetize these in a way that we would even be able to know how we would enforce a violation. But again, particularly where are there differences of opinion?
So the state code, as I read it, has three levels. One is any financial interest, where, for example, if you're a director or if you have any financial interest requires disclosures. Others require a substantial interest, which is defined as a 10% interest in any business entity that would require disclosure. And finally, any personal interest which conflicts with an official's performance of their public duties would create a conflict. So those are the three levels in the state code.
But I'm assuming that personal conflict of interest, whatever that may be, would have monetary value for it to raise to the level of a conflict of interest. In fact, I would, I would, based on how I've read it, and I'm not an attorney, I would, I would think that would have to have a monetary impact for that to truly be a conflict of interest. Because again, a difference of opinion, everybody can have a difference of opinion, but there would have to be some type of monetary benefit from that conflict for it to be a conflict. Otherwise, it's a difference of opinion.
So can I jump in on this? So, right, I have the manual from the League of Cities and Towns, and I sent you this. So their attorney, who was looking at this, and this is something I sent to you, it says, I don't know what the personal interests mentioned in four or five, and he's talking about the same issue. Above includes, so be careful, the public will think it's anything you're passionate about. The courts will probably interpret it to mean a financial interest of some kind. So I really appreciate all the work you've done on this. I think it's much improved and different things, but, you know, and I'm really glad we have an ethics commission because I think as members of the council, it's unfair for one member of the council say to another one, it's gee, I think you have a conflict of interest. I think as a council member, we need to state our conflicts of interest. But I think it's bad in a public meeting to accuse someone else of having a conflict of interest. So I like having this independent commission so that people can kind of sit down and investigate the matter. But, you know, what Ed's saying is, if you look through all the codes and different things, they usually define personal interest as personal financial interest. And I'd just like to hear what other cities are saying about that. That's, it's just kind of hard to understand how you're going to put a fine on that and how you're going to determine what's another personal interest. And that's kind of the vague area of the code, I think, yeah.
And I think, I think what you read, I would concur with. The section 10, 3, 13, 08 is in captioned "Investment Creating Conflict of Interest with Duties." So that investment is what, you know, is what the section is called. But I think that it would be redundant to put any personal interest, which is so much broader than just an investment. It says, "Any personal interest or investment" which creates a conflict between their personal interests and public duties. So it's very possible the court couldn't, could limit the definition to a financial interest as a personal interest, or they might read that as being more expansive.
Tim, the only caveat I've had to that, and obviously any is pretty broad, but the chapter section is entitled "Investment Creating Conflict." And then if you go down to the penalties for violation, they are all monetary. The scope and the level of violation is based on the monetary value of that investment that creates the conflict of interest. I don't think you can be so broad as to say it's any personal interest. I mean, if, if I don't like the neighbor's tree across the street, does that create a conflict of interest?
Well, I have not attempted to define a personal interest. What I've done is I've just.
But you have in terms of what you've put into the.
I've tried to create a conflict using two definitions, one financial, one in scenarios where there's a potential claim against the city.
So, and Tim, let me ask you a question. Is there anything in state code that precludes any city from creating an ethics code that's beyond what the state code?
As you've seen from, for example, Kaysville that was emailed out today, you'll see that it's customary for cities to have ethics codes or codes of conduct that are more spelled out than what the state code is, if they choose to have one. In fact, every city that's adopted one, other than just saying, we adopt this, if they spell it out, it's usually more expansive than what the state has.
So that, we aren't limited by what the state has in code, and other cities have in fact enacted codes of conduct that are broader than that.
Cities can be more prescriptive than the state unless the state has preempted the field by saying, you can't be more restrictive than us.
And how, how does the ethics committee, the independent ethics committee, interpret violations differently than the state code? Because again, I keep going back to the state code. I mean, we could put anything we wanted in ordinance, but is the, is the ethics committee, does the interlocal agreement have a different violation standard than the state code? And if so, how do they have a different standard? And what are we going to enforce this with? Because if it's not enforceable, why would we even put this very vague language in an ethics ordinance? I'm very familiar with conflict of interests. I sign one every year where I work. And so conflicts of interests are just part of working. But this goes far beyond the scope of what a typical conflict of interest would include.
So I'm presuming, Tim, that the, that the commission would look at our code in trying to determine what a violation means. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do you know how the ethics committee would interpret the violations again? Because if we're back to the state code, we're just talking in circles. Because there's no monetary value to a difference of opinion.
It would be using our ordinance and the state law.
But your ordinance doesn't state the violations. I mean, it states the violations, but it doesn't state the penalties of the violation. And if you revert back to Title 13 or 10, the violations are all monetary, so we're just, we're chasing our tail.
So the standard would be, after reviewing the complaint, the commission shall determine whether there is clear and convincing evidence supporting a violation of the Municipal Officers and Employees Act or applicable local ordinance. If there are multiple alleged violations, they shall separately determine whether clear and convincing evidence supports each violation. If the commission determines that no allegations in the complaint were proved by clear and convincing evidence, they shall order that the complaint be dismissed.
What's the punishment? I mean, you know.
That's right here. It's in 10, 3, 13.
It's in the state municipal.
Right there.
Thing.
There's the violations. It goes down to 100 or less dollars.
So the, the interlocal agreement, which, if you look at penalty in state code.
It's very clear. It's a dollar amount.
In 13, 12, it says that, it lists a couple of ways you could be penalized. One would be for removal.
That's the violations.
The interlocal agreement reads, "If the commission finds a violation, the commission may recommend to the respective city council any appropriate action or remedy, including but not limited to censure, reprimand, additional ethics training, or removal from office."
So that would be a recommendation back to the council, which the council could, would have, would act on potentially, however they chose, right?
Right. But again, that's scalable based on the dollar amount. I mean, it goes from a second-degree felony to a Class B misdemeanor based on the dollar amount. And so I don't, I don't, again, I still don't see how you're going to monetize a difference of opinion.
Well.
Because we're, we're making a difference of opinion a conflict of interest.
The, the ethics commission can never impose criminal sanctions, so if it's a misdemeanor or a felony, that would be investigated by the county attorney. That would be completely separate from this.
While we're contemplating that, because I agree with Councilman Dennis, but if we get in the nitty-gritty of the ordinance here, I just have some questions because I think it is contingent on our discussion now. But for example, in standards of conduct, conflict of interest in the ordinance, A policy. So, you know, I don't have any problem with one and three in A, but two, it says officials are to be independent, impartial, and fair in their judgment and actions. So for example, let's just give some examples. You know, if someone lives in a certain part of their city and, and they feel like they're representing not only their neighborhood as well as the rest of the city, and, and they make some statements, but other members think, well, you're not impartial because you live there, even though you stated your conflict of interest. It seems like a couple of people could make a claim to the ethics commission. And so if I was voting, and, and there's nothing, and as I've read back on this, if we state our conflict of interest, most of the time, if you look at the ethics training at the state auditor site and different things, there is no reason why you can't participate in the discussion and vote. But somebody could then come and say, oh, but you weren't impartial, so we're going to file a thing. And so I worry about the definition of some of these words here. I mean, they make common sense. But at the same time, how, how do you judge what's impartial and what's fair and what's independent? I mean, Councilman Osler has been very involved in Dry Creek Lake, and that affects his neighborhood and his house a lot. He says conflict of interest, he's informing us, but somebody could say, well, you're not impartial because you live there. So I worry about some of the wording here that could lead into trouble, okay? Second, in the B, conflicts of interest, number two, one of the things is you can't act or agree or help anyone that may contemplate a claim against the city. But how do you know what people are thinking? So there's been a lot of good service from the city council to the people that had their basements flooded with sewage. But if you're working with them and trying to help them, how do you know in the back of their minds they're not thinking about suing the city if things aren't the way they want it? And I don't think that will happen, but how do you determine that? So some of this stuff just kind of is, is vague enough. It makes me really kind of nervous.
So in regards, in regards to contemplating, I certainly didn't intend any of you to be mind readers. I think, I think there are external indicators of someone contemplating a lawsuit. Number one, I've met with an attorney about suing the city. If they tell you that, you know they're contemplating a claim. Or number two, you know, you get a notice of claim in the mail. So we know that.
But what if they don't tell you that?
But, Tim, a complaint is very different than a suit. A complaint is a complaint. A suit is a suit. They're too different.
Well, I put claim because a claim could be civil, could be all kinds of, there are EEOC claims, there are civil lawsuits, there are lots of claims.
But an EEOC complaint is not a suit.
A claim is something in which a person is intending to recover damages or remedy from something they've suffered. So if the city is having a claim exercised against it, it just means that we're positioned in a situation of liability.
So I think Scott brought up a good point. Let's assume we have these with sewer. Let's just kind of walk through. So those who had the sewer damage, naturally, they've contemplated seeking attorney. I've heard that. So if I've heard that, that they're contemplating, what do I do? I mean, I haven't encouraged, I haven't given them information. You know, matter of fact, when I heard it, I says, I think it'd be, it's up to you, but at that time, we went, built a communicate. I couldn't communicate with them anymore. I'd have to go through the city attorney. That's what I mentioned to them. But is that, they've told me they've contemplated it.
Correct. If you, if, the way this is written, if you have indications they're considering suing the city, I would encourage you to refer them to me and not to, because you're on the city council, you may also be their neighbor, you may also be their friend, but first and foremost, you sit on that bench as a city council member. So you have to kind of suborn those other roles you may have with that individual and all those kind of kindly relationships you've gotten. Because you're on the city council, if there is a claim against the city, you are going to be deciding how to settle that claim, whether to litigate it, if there money is going to be paid on that claim. So you have to remove and recuse yourself so that you are not on both sides of the table in that situation, if you know that they're considering suing the city. Otherwise, you could let slip, well, something that we don't want let slip. So there's just kind of that breach where we want to make sure there's a wall that goes up. If someone's going to be exercising a claim against the city, I don't, I would hope city council members would not be assisting or aiding them in that. Not because they may not have a moral right to do so, but because of your special position as a fiduciary.
So am I supposed to now disclose that, visiting with the residents, they said they felt like they need to get with the, an attorney? Because they've contemplated that that might be the only action they need to protect themselves with a sewer. So because they've mentioned that, I have to, when do I do that?
I think that's the point, where if they're going to sue the city or contemplating it, anything you say to them, because you're an official of the city, could be used in a deposition down the road. Well, Councilman Osler told me X, Y, and Z. I have seen this. It always happens. And the problem is, is that none of us speak for the city. Only the council unitedly speaks for the city. So if each of you are kind of having side conversations with an individual, you're trying to be helpful, so I don't fault you at all for your good intention. But legally, it puts you in a very complicated situation where your words will be used against us in a future court of law.
Tim, just another scenario. Say you have an employee who approaches you and says, I'm aware of some misappropriation of funds. So you have a whistleblower complaint. How is that supposed to be handled as a member of the city council?
So I think that we, I think this policy is complimentary to our whistleblower complaint because there are procedures that we've just adopted for whistleblowers.
It's not, it's not complimentary. It contradicts. Because it says may not act. It doesn't say maybe act. It says may not act. And if you become aware of a misappropriation of funds and don't act on it, then you put the city at greater risk.
So I don't think any ethics commission would ever find any violation of any ethics rule.
But that's the way the ordinance is written.
If there is a whistleblower complaint and we strictly follow the whistleblower procedures that we've just adopted, there's nothing unethical or conflicting about that.
Well, it is because it conflicts with the ordinance as written, because it says may not act or offer or agree to act in such a way to help. So if I have an employee who comes to me and says, I'm aware of this embezzlement, but I'm afraid to bring it forward, I can't act based on this ordinance, which conflicts directly with whistleblower regulations.
Because it's a claim against the city.
I see it differently.
That, well, that's the way it's written.
I think that a whistleblower complaint, we just adopted what you should do. You, there's a reporting procedure. You just do that and you step away. You don't, you don't provide support to that person. I think that's why they're complimentary. You follow our whistleblower procedures. You do not aid or assist or render any kind of help, advice, or information to that person who's contemplating filing a suit. You just do the report and you step away.
I guess I'll.
But that's still an act.
I guess I'll respectfully disagree there because I am acting on the information that they provided.
By doing what?
By informing the city that there's a whistleblower complaint.
Okay, but I think what we did is we went beyond that, though.
No, I don't think so.
Well.
Because again, if there's misappropriation of funds and the employee who's aware of it won't report it, don't we have a stewardship to report that whistleblower complaint as a member of the city council? And this ordinance is written so that you can't do that.
No, I don't think it's written that way at all.
It says may not. It doesn't say.
May not what?
May not act, offer to agree to act in such a way as to help, represent, aid, advise, furnish information, or otherwise provide assistance to another person or entity exercising or contemplating, exercising a claim against the city.
So if, if you report that to the city council, is that.
It doesn't say report it to the city council.
But here, if, if you say, I'm saying, if you report it to the city council, are you helping the individual? Advising, you know, you're following a predefined process. So.
And I would be fine if it just says, report that to the city council, but it doesn't. That's the problem with the ordinance. It's very, very restrictive and subjective.
Well, I, I don't think it's objective at all. I think it, it, it does what we're trying to prevent.
What are we, what are we trying to prevent?
We're trying to prevent individual city council members from giving advice to city employees. That's not their role.
Okay.
And when, when city council members do that, and it, and it could result in a lawsuit against the city, that's when it gets to be a problem.
I, I guess I'm still, I'm still confused, because this whole issue surfaced back in January, when I brought an issue to the city attorney, and quite frankly, it was handled very inappropriately.
See, and I don't think it was.
This whole mess, 10 months of this has grown from that.
But I don't think it was handled-
And it would be nice to move on, quite frankly.
And I don't think it was handled misappropriately, I think the city attorney handled it exactly right.
He did not. Based on the revised HR policy, we've revised the actions of the city attorney.
Well, I, I would like to, just for the sake of putting this on the table-
I apologized, Tim, but-
That's okay.
But there's an open wound there that still hasn't healed.
So I would like to put a motion on the table to approve the ordinance amending section 2.04, .070 of the Highland City Code governing standards of conduct and conflicts of interest.
For a second.
So is the, action or ordinance, standards of conduct, is that what is on the agenda or is it a discussion?
No, it's, it's an action item.
So we're, yeah.
Can I, can I add just one other comment, and then I'll, I'll try to be quiet? I contacted the city attorney in January in, in the form of a notification of a complaint, and I believe, based on the criteria of how we've defined a complaint, it was a legitimate complaint, because it went via email as a complaint. Now, according to that, that violates this ordinance.
It violates, it's still for discussion.
I, I, I guess I'm just very uncomfortable that we can't raise an issue with the city attorney if we feel like there's an issue. Otherwise, you're basically putting a muzzle over our, our whole conversation.
I don't think that does prevent you from bringing it up with the city attorney, I don't. You?
So in-
I second the motion, so that we can move forward with the discussion. I, I didn't see an ordinance number on it, so I thought it was more of a discussion, a continued discussion.
So there's a motion, a second, any other, any discussion?
Well, I've got some more questions, and, you know, I don't want to prolong the matter, but on Communication C, I'm fine with the first two sections. It says, number three, members of the City Council shall share substantive information that is relevant to a matter under consideration of other members of the council. I mean, I think that it's important that we all do that, but I, how do you define substantive? I, I mean, all of us have understanding of different things, does that mean that every time we learn anything, or we think about anything, or have an idea, that we have to share it with the council? You know, for example, I mean, we've talked about the issues with one department that we've talked about ad nauseam this year, but representatives, and I'm not pointing fingers, I don't want to insult anybody, but representatives from elected officials in the city met in the governor's office several times about, you know, some land in the city, state land and stuff, and kind of lobbied, and, and I kind of heard about it kind of indirectly or afterwards and different things, and, and so that, how, how do you define this substantive thing? I mean, does it prohibit any of us from kind of going out and researching and doing things? And, I mean, Councilman Ossler has been great about researching and bringing things, but I don't think he tells us everything he finds. So where, how do you define it? Is it a certain percent, or, you know? So things like this kind of worry me, how they're, because someone could say, oh, you didn't share that information with us, so we're going to file an ethics complaint, you see what I mean? I, I just think this is, can be used as a political weapon still, and I, I think that there's some concerns from those of us about it being weaponized. Because I think, by and large, this is much better, Tim, and I really appreciate what you've done on it, but-
So substantive, in my opinion, would be information that's critical enough, that had that information been presented, it would have swayed how you may vote on an issue. I mean, it's that critical and, and goes to the heart of an issue, it's substantive. And so we really want to promote the council to better communicate, share with one another, and, and not sit on any important information that really is, is, is critical to an issue.
But how would you ever know that unless it's shared? And if it's not shared, you never know.
It, it, it usually comes out after the fact, so it's one of those things that we find out hindsight 2020.
Sorry.
Motion, the second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, could I-
Yes. Keep it real short.
About the whistleblower case, that it may help, if it's a whistleblower, then they may have a complaint, but they won't have a claim. And this is talking specifically about claims.
A whistleblower is a complaint.
It is a complaint, but it is not a claim, and the ordinance specifically talks about a, a claim.
No.
And-
Thank, thank you. So I have to read the question. Okay, question's been moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Is this, this is roll call, right? So Brian?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Tim?
Yes.
Ed?
No.
Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes three to two. Next item is a discussion item. Thank you. Tim is, Tim has to leave, because his, he has family duties to attend to, and we appreciate him staying as long as he did. Thank you. What's, I've lost my, I've lost my agenda, where'd it go?
Mayor and council, I will be brief. Bottom line is, due to some decisions that North Point has made in the past, City Council directed staff to look into the possibility of other alternatives of a place to take our solid waste. So in the course of doing that, we identified some alternatives, but the bottom line, the reason that I'm bringing it to you now is our contract auto renews, starts over again, ends December 31st, 2019, but we have to give notice by December 1st of this year if we were to want to withdraw. I did identify through, at least three alternatives, however, the bottom line is, none of them are 100% secure by January 1st, 2020, and so ultimately, I'm recommending that we stay with North Point for another cycle, and that ultimate, oh, and honestly, if we pulled out and wanted to come back in, it's a pretty hefty price tag. So ultimately, I'm recommending we stay with North Point another cycle, and that, look at this again in two years, when there, those alternatives might be more fleshed out. But ultimately, we would give notice then, if we wanted to, December 2020.
So Erin, just to be clear, so we, we're in North Point, and Scott, you can add to this, if you, we've, we've paid money in to help build up, and we, we actually are helping fund the purchase of a landfill.
The Bayview landfill, yes.
And if we were to leave, any of the investments we would make-
We would walk away from.
You would walk away from, and then if we came back in, we'd have to buy back in.
We have to buy back in based on our percentage of waste. So it's, it's a pretty hefty, I mean, the contract is well-written for North Point, certainly. So.
Can I make a couple of comments? And this kind of refers back to this ordinance we just approved, and I had a nice discussion with Erin, but you know, I serve on the North Point Waste Management Board, this was a previous decision or discussion on the council before, and I'm kind of surprised that no one ever mentioned that there was this going on. I mean, you know, this is kind of a critical thing, so I go down to the board and vote and participate in different things, and I don't know that my city is thinking about pulling out of it. So I, I think that's kind of uncomfortable thing, and that goes back to the communication. So I think we can all communicate better. Now, I'll tell you, there's some interesting things going on in the board, but a lot of it's off, off the agenda and different things. There's a company from Germany who's kind of working this, different cities over along the Wasatch Front, saying that they would come in, recycle and take care of all the waste, turn it into biofuel. The problem is, is that's not been a success, it's been successful in Germany, but it hasn't been really too successful in the US, so there's been a lot of discussion, but there's not been a move. However, I understand that Lehigh has signed a letter of commitment?
They have, so-
Yeah.
Lehigh is looking at alternatives to not renew with North Point, so they have signed a letter of intent with the company's name-
Herr something.
Herrhoff.
Herrhoff, yes.
Forms a stable, stable at, the biodegradable stuff you're talking about, the fuel. Lehigh has signed a letter of intent with their investment company to move towards them, but they're trying to figure out what they're going to do in the interim, because they won't be ready for a while, of course, so.
Right.
Yes, that's absolutely true.
So the interesting thing about that, there is a corporation or a branch of this that's doing this in Kentucky, but they haven't found a market for the biofuel in the US. And the big question in the discussions, because this has been all off the agenda, it's kind of been, oh, by the way, sort of stuff, so I haven't known how to treat it seriously or not, but the, the question is, is on the blue coast in the United States, where they actually ship some of their solid waste to other states at great expense, why they haven't jumped on this? So it'll be interesting to see what Lehigh finds, and the first we heard about Lehigh doing this was last meeting, and they said, oh, we're just looking at it, we'll kind of keep you posted, but that's a significant change to North Point, so.
It is, I mean, Lehigh's a big player, we're small potatoes compared to them, but I know that Lehigh met with-
Are they up for renewal this year?
They, we all are, every participating entity is, so I know that Lehigh had a meeting with, his name is escaping me, the North Point Director.
They haven't given notice yet.
Roger Harper.
Roger, they've had a meeting with Roger and are negotiating with him about contract right now, from my understanding. But, and Scott, I want to apologize, you're absolutely right, you should have been included, that was a staff error. I was given this project a long time ago, but because of other things, it got pushed off and pushed off, but that was a staff error, and I'm sorry about that.
I'm, I'm not complaining, I just kind of, I, when I saw it on the agenda, I thought, oh, am I supposed to be your presentation today? But I'm asking Tim, I'm going to be out of town for the next meeting, which is this coming Monday, I've asked Tim if he'd attend as a non-voting member, because they're talking about budget, and Lehigh will probably come and talk about this, so I think it's important he'll come. I was going to talk to him more tonight, but he's left, so.
Okay.
I'll email him a bunch of stuff, so.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Another quick update, somewhat related to, well, related to everything, is to garbage our recycling tipping fees. So a couple of concerns have come up regarding if we are going to start taking tipping fees ourselves, before we change our contract with Republic, let's first get a contract set with Rocky Mountain Recycling. Another concern is, do we want to really change right now? Because nothing is forcing us to at this point, it would be, Republic is asking us to do it, but they don't have any teeth behind that. So do we want to do that now, or wait until our contract's up? And Tim brought up the point of Republic, you know, has been making money, is making money, is this something the council wants to do? So I've communicated those concerns to Reese, he, Mayor Man and myself have a meeting, are working on getting a meeting set up to determine next steps.
Then that's, we're trying to schedule that for next week.
Next week is the hope. I mean, you know, this has been a problem, problem for Republic for months, but at the same time, you know, the quicker they can, you know, get a resolution, the better for them, so.
When does it, it expires in-
2020.
July?
2020, so-
On the 30th?
I don't have the date. I know it's in 2020.
One of the things that they talked about when he was here last time was us taking a contract with-
Rocky Mountain.
Rocky Mountain directly, and-
Right.
Getting them out of the middle of that, and that would be a, a thing we could do on top of-
Essentially what we would do with North Point, where we pay them directly our tipping fees, we would pay Rocky Mountain Recycling.
And we would need to have that as a, just an action item on-
Absolutely, we would need to talk to Rocky Mountain about doing that, we haven't gotten there yet, because these red flags were raised, other ones.
So I'm assuming everybody saw the information about Republic and how profitable they are as a corporation.
Say that again.
I'm assuming everybody read Tim's notes about how profitable they are. Now, I'm, I'm sure that each individual salesman has his own quota and has his profitability target, independent of how the company's doing, so I'm sure Reese is getting pressure, but-
I'm sure.
That the company itself is, seems to be doing quite well.
I think it's great that you guys are going to have the conversation with him and bring back what you find.
All right.
I'm, I'm not in any hurry personally to, to jump into this, but there may be reasons. I mean, there may be some value, it's, it's a give and take. They've been a good partner, so we have to look at it and see how valuable it is to us.
And Reese has been forthcoming, I know he reports to Republic, but he really has been a good partner to us, and I appreciate that.
And I, I think it's important that if we do pass, absorb those costs, that we pass them on to the recycling only, not to the other garbage collection.
Right. And I believe that's everything, except for make note of future meetings, especially, we are going to be meeting at 6 o'clock at our next meeting on the 23rd.
So there's, you-
Oh, excuse me. That's right, I'm sorry.
Todd had one more thing. I put on your desk at the bottom of-
Erin, when did you say our next meeting is?
November 13th.
No.
November 13th.
Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong agenda, November 13th, it's at 6:00 PM.
Okay, and what, what is the meeting at 6:00 for?
So we've got a lot of items on the agenda, but the 6:00, we are going, Lewis and Young is going to do their final presentation on the general fund.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, each of you have on your, in front of you a, it's, I folded it, but there's a map that I, Todd's going to just discuss a little bit with us.
I'm pulling it up now. So Mayor, Council, I, I received this email actually today, and I will be very quick, just I know that we're running out of time here, and I can't see, is that zoomed out all the way?
This is 12.
In, in working with Lehigh City, that we, we also have an issue with 1200 East, this would be our 7000 West, it's the Highland Hollow subdivision down in the dip, 1200 East Lehigh, hopefully you're all familiar with that. We have our sewer lift station that's right in this area, can you see my pointer there?
No.
Okay, you see it over here?
Yeah.
So right here is our sewer lift station.
This is the same.
So yeah, you can, yeah, just look there.
Got it in here.
So let me walk you through what this PDF basically is. The property owner on 1200 East, up on top of the hill, has been approached by Lehigh City, because he owns the right-of-way for 1200 East. Lehigh City is trying to do a three-way transaction between us, Lehigh City, and that property owner. And let me explain what Lehigh, what Highland City would be giving up in this, and what Highland City would be gaining in this. If you can see right there, the triangular green parcel that we own, we also own the parcel that is shaded in pink right next to it, that kind of follows what would be a, a future trail or easement. Lehigh is proposing that we give that property up. That property would go to the property owner directly to the north, who is Autumn Ridge Farms LLC. In return, the reason that they're asking us to do this-
When you say to that property, you're talking both the red and the pink, or you're talking just the-
Yes.
Or blue and, blue and pink?
Both, both the blue and the pink, all of the property would go to them. The reason it's different is because that property owner would like square foot per square foot trade. And so the green would be a direct trade for the other green to the east, the Autumn Ridge Farms LLC down in the bottom there, Highland City would receive that as a straight across trade. The other pink portion that is Highland City's that we would give up is, basically is a direct trade for the right-of-way, Lehigh City would receive from Autumn Farm, our Autumn Ridge Farms. So basically, we would be giving up the exact amount of square footage that they would be giving up, Highland City would get the portion there on the east, down in the bottom, and Lehigh City would get the property for 1200 East, so that they could widen that. If, if you've driven that before, they have a really bad intersection over there with some hanging lights for a traffic signal, they want to redo that intersection, widen it, make it nice. So with that being said, that's what Highland City would give up in property and gain in property. Would give up the two parcels, and we would gain the small piece on the east side. But also, if you look down at the bottom of the PDF, Highland City would also receive $400,000. This is their current offer. Keep in mind, this is all conceptual. I met with them one time yesterday, and this is the PDF they sent me today, this afternoon. They would like to move soon, just to at least have an idea if this is even feasible.
So can I, let me just clarify this in my mind.
Sure.
So we get 1.3 acres, we give up 3.06 acres, but in lieu of the 1.68 acres we give up, they're going to pay us $400,000?
Correct. What I also want to show you is- What I also want to show you is, the exhibit that you have in front of you does not quite show it. The one that I have up here, and I can email it to all of you, shows the contours. I walked with the mayor and Kurt today up the trail and showed them what the topo looks like on this property, and it is very, very steep, and I suggest that if you would like, take a walk and go out and look at it, so that we can see what we're giving up. But also, keep in mind, what we also are giving up is an easement for a future waterline. Lehigh City needs a waterline out of Dry Creek. We knew it was coming. This is the alignment that they're hoping for. It will change because I believe that the easement will actually go through that green portion and stay on the north side of the Dry Creek. So this will change. In concept, I would just like to get some feedback, because we're going to continue to meet with Lehigh City. As an engineer, I am watching out for the residents of Highland. Looking at this from an engineering standpoint, it makes sense. We, I believe, as Highland City, are getting a good deal. In my opinion, it's a win-win-win. I don't know how the developer feels about this yet. Lehigh City is going to negotiate that. We are not getting involved in that, and they can work that out at this point. But what I would like is just feedback from the city council. They would like to know how to proceed if we even have interest in doing this.
What's the, I know the topography on that road because if you run it, you know how crappy that is. It's fun, though, when you're driving your car off of that.
Yeah, it is.
At 40 miles an hour or more.
That's not the speed limit.
It's 80 at the bottom, isn't it? What is the topography on the portion that we would be receiving?
The flattest area out there.
Okay, that's what I was assuming. So we're giving up a crappy hill for some flatland that's also bordered by Highland all the way around it, isn't it?
Correct, yes.
Isn't that kind of a peninsula inside of our property?
Correct. Highland City owns to the north, to the east, and to the south. We do not own to the west, that's the only thing we don't own.
But it's kind of a peninsula right in the middle of...
Correct.
To go from one side of our property to the other, we'd have to go all the way around that.
I brought this up with our Parks and Rec Superintendent Josh. The only downside that I see, there are a few mountain bike trails through this area that we would have to mitigate that, so... But as far as the residents are concerned, I think this is a win.
Todd, does this address the access, so we've got another entry-exit point?
Correct. We could actually use this, if we develop this, the 20-foot wide easement, we widen that a little bit more and actually do a right, you know, both-direction asphalt lane. We could put a parking lot back here and access our complete park from this location.
Okay.
Yep.
And you're talking about in the Autumn Ridge? You could put a parking lot in there, is that what you're saying?
Correct, in that location somewhere.
Yeah.
So Todd, there's a couple of things. So as we look, is this purchase of 400, for the 400,000, of course, the pink, but also is for us agreeing to have an easement only up to the bridge? This is not addressing the property going towards Dry Creek Lake if there's an easement there. This is not for the complete easement all the way to Dry Creek, correct?
This is the only exhibit, they have one that they sent that you have in front of you, and then this one is, the only difference between this exhibit and the one you have is the contours. Because I asked them to show the contours so that we could see what it looks like. These are the only exhibits that we've received so far. Keep in mind, they put this together today and sent it over, but as I talked with Kurt, I met with them yesterday, and it wasn't this. This isn't the proposal they gave us, gave me yesterday, and I just, I asked them to go back and come up with a plan that is a win-win-win. And I feel like they made some changes, and this is actually in the benefit of Highland as well. The one yesterday was not.
So is the easement that they're talking about here for their waterline, it would go down the middle of what we would consider our road?
Correct.
They're asking for this now, would that take away our ability to negotiate any other area? Because we've talked, I mean, Kurt has been wanting to use that as a lever to force them to work with us.
It's what Kurt just brought up. This, currently the exhibit, currently the agreement on the table is just for this land swap. We still own property from this east side up to the lake that they are currently not asking for the easement yet.
So it could still actually lock us in a little bit tighter because now they've got a partial path, but not the whole path?
Correct. And then we would do more negotiation. Now, keep in mind, this is a concept. We will go back, we will keep on negotiating, and by November 13th, hopefully I have something for the council to actually make an action. I will keep you informed of how those go, the negotiations. They would like to move soon on this. Their main concern is 1200 East, not necessarily the easement. They would love to get the easement, but they're really concerned about getting 1200 East. They get many, many complaints on that every day.
My only concern with this, I really like everything, my only concern with this is if we provide the easement here, they can come back and argue, "Well, it's less value because we're only getting a smaller portion of easement in the future." If we could pull that out of here, we're talking now the whole easement against what our needs are from the park. In other words, if this is a third of it, now they're only arguing for two-thirds, they're going to claim that they're not getting as much benefit, where they've already negotiated this. If we can negotiate all of it together, it gives us a stronger position.
And keep in mind, this takes care of one of the requests that we had. One of the requests is trying to get access in. We can still ask for that easement up on the north side to, you know, have a future access. This is a much better access for Highland City because we're not going down off the hill, across the Murdoch Canal Trail and all of that. This, in my opinion, this is a great access for our park, if it's done right. Could be done in the future, but I feel like Lehigh City on this one came to the table with something that is in the best interest of Highland.
So Todd, in the conversation, I think, we mentioned when we were walking down there, I think you need to decide if the 20-foot area, we just need to make sure before we do any property trade, or if we agree to that, that we have enough area for a road, and if we need to have a trail. Now, the master plan that was done many years ago, there was supposed to be a Dry Creek trail that would come through this area, and so I think, this is kind of, I think also the other area, so we, there needs to be a trail that would probably be off the side of the road coming down here for people to be able to walk. We need to make sure, there might be one, the ass, is if they're going to be ripping this up to put their piping in, not just put that back down, but maybe to put asphalt down. And I think that was a question, we didn't know if that's what they were offering.
Correct, and we probably will go back to them and ask for a little bit wider because they're saying multi-use trail and Highland Park access, but 20 feet would not be big enough for us to do that. So we'll go back and negotiate and say, "This is what we want that cross-section to look like, this is where we would want the pipe to be," and then we would bring that back to the council.
I just want to make a comment. Todd, I appreciate all your work on this, and, you know, I'm kind of always opposed to letting neighboring cities annex Highland boundaries, but I'm not opposed to it when the citizens of Highland are treated fairly, and that we get some benefit from it, and I think this is good, especially if they're willing to pay some money into Highland. And so I can support this as what you're presenting. Hopefully, it will come to pass, you know?
So now we have money from heaven for our...
Pickleball.
It almost grew on a tree, didn't it?
Who knows?
I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
I moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.